Mr. President, back to order. Can we just talk a little bit about scheduling, please? If we could do that. We have a motion before us. We're going to take a vote on that motion and then sometime before that item is done, we're going to probably see if we can finish up the general fund and any other motions that affect the general fund, get that done. And if we're moving right along, we'll then move on to the storm, the enterprise funds. And on those, there's been an issue or concern that this morning, whether or not there was an adoption of the, of the, those budgets. I think, not speaking out of turn, that up here, we didn't anticipate, we didn't see it like that, but talking with our legal counsel, it certainly could be that way. So I'm going to take a motion at some point in time, pretty quick here, that will say, I want to, we should ask for reconsideration of item number 20. And then we'll take up the enterprise funds, okay? And Mr. Providenti, are we about, where are you on the general fund?
We're basically done on the general fund. We wanted to talk a little bit more about some of the other government funds.
Right. We're going to do that and then we've got the CIP funds as well.
Right.
The other thing I've got is, is that on the rate design stuff, we have a person who has to get in and get out. So let's see, let's see if we can get through the budget, the general fund, reconsider item 20, and then I'd like to take the, see, the new for matter out of order, so that doesn't, we'll take care of that one. And then take up the utility committee on the connection fee rate issue, okay? That make sense to everybody?
So we're not doing redevelopment?
Well, we're going to have to, when do you want to do redevelopment?
It's all part of the budget.
Yeah. Well, I think, let's see if we can get through, let's see where we go. I mean...
Yeah, redevelopment is a separate item on the agenda.
Okay. Let's see, we'll see if we can get the general fund and the, and the enterprise funds out of the way and then go from there, all right? Okay. So we have a motion before us to, a motion and a second, to accept the changes to the budgets presented by Supervisor Bagwell. On that motion is our further discussion. Supervisor Shirk.
Yes. Since I have the hard copy in my hand, I would like to ask Nick, I'd like to go through each line item that Lori presented, how we got there, what's your appraisal of the dollar amount that she's asking reduced, and I would like to have a discussion about each line item. So if you could point us in the right direction from that.
So, I mean, it's, it's kind of hard for me to kind of go through each of these line items. I think basically what she did is she probably looked at, at prior year history and decided that they weren't spending the amount that was actually in those line items, right?
If you want this sheet, this is the one that was reduced and copied for everyone.
I mean, I'm really not, I'm really not sure what, what I can say about them. I mean, the only thing I can really say about these is that these line items have probably, we haven't reduced them probably, or increased them in probably seven or eight years and they've been, they've been being carried forward, you know, as part of, as part of the department's budget. And again, at this point, you know, we typically don't line item, I mean, we don't, we don't judge, you know, department directors based on the line items, right?
I mean, we actually have a higher standard than the state does. We're basically held to the, or from the state, we're held to the major functional groupings, you know, general government, public safety. As long as we don't exceed our budget for public safety, the fire department can be over, as long as the sheriff is under, we're good in terms of budget violations. We actually hold our department directors to a higher standard. We hold them to the execution of their budget. And in accordance with that, we build a little flexibility into it. I mean, this is a budget document and budget and situations throughout the year change and department directors have the flexibility to move item from one line, one line item to another in order to meet their department's mission. So, you know, we're talking about a fairly large number when we're focused on some, some pretty small line items that do give that flexibility to the department directors.
Understood. So out of the, on this page that Lori presented, there's 11 items, correct? And you agree that all 11 should be reduced to the dollar amount that Lori says?
Well, I mean, I don't really agree with it. I mean, basically, I think, you know, I, I would go more with the budget that I was proposing. I don't have a problem taking the, the epic ride money out of, out of redevelopment. These other amounts, again, as, as the city manager had said, you know, it, it just takes away flexibility for some of the department managers to manage their budgets. I mean, it's really, it's really not up to us. I guess it's, it's really a board decision. I mean, we typically...
I'm okay if you make it. All right.
Well, what, the dollar amount here, what is this total? All 11 items?
Based on the motion, we came up with an additional 10,000 in revenues and a, in a reduction in expenses of 81,500. And then we also have to add the NNDAs amount for 75,000 and change, 75,682.
So the net?
So with net, to, to be a little bit of a savings, you know, $12,000-ish, $11,000.
So the issue is, I found the money to pay for the NNDAs contract that was not in the budget.
Basically, correct.
Okay. But how did the $30,000 get into the general fund for the epic rides? Where did that originally come from? Who okayed that or where did, where did it originate?
That was the, that was a recommendation that the city manager, basically the city manager told me to put that in the budget for the epic ride. It was, I mean, all these, this whole budget is staff's recommendation to you as a budget. So you can either say, yes, we like this budget, or no, we don't. So that's basically, you know, in a nutshell, what we're doing.
And how do we, if we're talking the budget, the general budget, how do we now say or take money out of redevelopment in this motion?
Well, you, you wasn't here. I mean, you are going to consider the redevelopment budget net, or I think it is the next item.
It's coming.
Yeah. It's coming. It might not be the next item. I have to roll up here.
Okay. But in this list, it's listed here. Am I reading this wrong?
Well, so what we're basically doing is we're taking it, the recommendation is to take it out of the general fund and add it to the redevelopment budget. So you would take it out here and then when we, when we talk about the redevelopment budget, you would have to add it back in that, in that budget.
Okay.
That's the recommendation.
Okay.
That's the motion.
You know, this is my second budget I've been through. I would say this one is the most disappointing, to have this in such a short period of time discussion and reevaluation of the budget. I think we should have had a separate meeting for the budget itself, should have had a workshop prior to this, and then had a board meeting where we could have talked openly at a, for like an agenda, without an agenda, for a motion where we could have had discussion about the budget. And then we have this meeting where we make motions for agenda and pass it. But I think doing the, in the process that we're doing, I hope we don't do it again this fashion. I, I don't think it really gives a great opportunity to the board members or to the citizens or this community to look at, discuss, think about, evaluate, research, and do your homework. We're given this seven days prior to it and we're asked to make decisions that amount to millions and millions of dollars. I think it's, my personal opinion, I hope we look at something different format in the coming years because this is the wrong pathway, I believe. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Passed unanimous. Okay. Are there further motions on the subset of the general fund? Anybody?
I would just like to make a motion that when we bring the GIS discussion back in terms of contract negotiation, that we also at that time talk about funding a grants manager position through the city manager's budget line item.
Okay.
That's a motion.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion? Yvette, go. Discussion.
Okay. So this, this will be coming back as a further discussion? That's all we're doing, correct? Thank you.
So this would be, this would be, if this were to go through, this would be an augmentation to the budget in, you know, after the budget is actually filed with the department taxation.
The personnel that was on, do we need to have that included with these, these individuals also? Or do we have to have a separate motion for these?
No.
No.
No, as long as you're okay with the budgets, those, that person, those personnel will be included in those budgets.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. Providenti, do we want to take a, we want to have a vote on the general fund? To approve the general fund budget?
We need to vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just moving. Okay. Further discussion on the motion of Supervisor Aboud and seconded by Supervisor Bonkowski? On them, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Carried? Unanimous. Okay. Do you want a motion now on the general fund or you want to wait?
I think it'd be fine if you wanted to go ahead and...
All right. Is the board ready to do this or not? Motion's in order. Who wants to do it? Anybody? Or all?
Do you want to do it, Lori? You have an opinion? I don't have it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 16 general fund budget as we have amended it today.
Maybe just give direction to staff.
To, to bring back the document for the public hearing on the 18th.
Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? All right. On the motion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by, oop, got it, sorry.
Give me a second?
Yeah, got a second.
Then we have discussion?
Sure. I thought I just asked for it. I'm sorry, Jim.
Sorry. I want to make sure we're clear. So now, at this time, can any board member ask questions about the general fund?
Sure. Discussion, yeah.
Okay. Is that right? I'm looking at Nick.
Well, he, it's our meeting, it's our meeting, Jim, so you kind of got to look at me and that's, hard to do, I know, but...
Dan, I got a couple of questions on account, department number 0710. Is that for all of 2016 or will that staff be reduced?
We're anticipating that staff to be 10 in 2016. There was nine in 2014. The board, there was a couple of folks that retired, a couple of higher level manager people that retired. So he came back to the board and wanted to replace those upper level management people with three more technician type people. And I believe the board approved that, so that's where we get with the, that's where we come up with the 10.
Correct. What was that budget? This is 1 million plus. What was it last year? If we replace the higher management, did we drop?
I believe it's, I believe it's about the same. He dropped it about 40,000, but then we're increasing some service and supply numbers for professional services. So the number, it's actually going down by about $50,000 from 16 to 15.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense.
On account number 0715.
Okay.
This is GIS. Does this, does this go back to the assessor's office, the GIS, this account?
This is the one that's, this is the one that's going to be renegotiated with Darren Schultz and Douglas County.
And Douglas, with Douglas County, that's the GIS and that's what's coming back for, would Dave be a part of that, correct? That's what I got from this morning's meeting, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And then account number 0729, can you tell me what this one is?
That's the operations at Northgate. So we pay some of the power and some of the heating over there. It's the utilities.
For Northgate?
For...
What?
Reown the building.
Which, oh, on the hot springs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. On 7, 0, 7, 0730?
Right. That's the city hall budget. Basically the same thing.
It's 113,000?
Correct.
Does that include the brick?
No.
That's just city hall?
Correct.
Do any department or other elected officials contribute to this dollar amount?
This is just the city hall. There's the utilities, postage, power, those types of things.
Doesn't include the assessor or the treasurer's office?
This budget does not, no.
They pay their own?
No. It's the heating and the power for the whole building.
For the whole building.
Right. It's all general fund, basically.
Okay. But they don't reimburse us any part of it?
No.
No.
Because they're part of the general fund.
Okay.
Is the reason.
And then account number 1425, community development.
Okay.
I got to get there, so... Actually, I was going to, as I get there, because I can't find it, if you could just briefly tell us what this is?
That's Lee Plummel Community Development Department.
Is any of this paid out of redevelopment or is this all general fund, obviously, correct?
This is all general, this piece, right.
Why would it be coming out of general fund?
Well, because it's planning and...
Okay.
Community development, those types of things.
And there is, is there a different formula coming out of any other funds for the brick itself?
Yes, there is.
And that's in redevelopment it comes from?
Part of in redevelopment, part of it is in building permits.
Okay.
Because they're in there as well. So it's kind of split.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Carried. Thank you. All right.
So if we want to go ahead and talk about capital projects, I guess we've talked about this fund a little bit.
Let's do this first. Let's, so I don't overlook it. It's okay with the board. I'd like to entertain a motion to reconsider item number 20. That's the recommendations from the Utility Financial Oversight Committee. If we could have that motion, we'll reconsider that and see if we can go there now, okay?
Second.
All right. I'll make that motion. You want to make that motion, Brad?
I'm sorry.
I move that we reconsider item number 20, the Utility Financial Oversight Committee discussion. And there's, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. On the motion, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. On the, on the actual, want to take us up to the water, excuse me, man, the water sewer and storm?
This is enterprise funds, right?
Ready?
Mayor, if I just can clarify, this is part of the enterprise fund, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, board members, David Brigada for the record, Carson City Public Works. So let's start with the sewer fund. In your packet here, we're going to go through each fund and here's the highlight of some of the changes. Nick, if you want to go to the next slide. So what we have here is, this is our fiscal summary for the, for the sewer fund and it's broken down into revenues and expenditures. It takes a look at the actuals for the previous year, our estimated amount for the 1415 this year, the proposed that we're going to be moving into, and then it shows what the difference is, the percent change in the budget. And then on the right-hand column, it lists what that dollar amount is. So the slide before this, basically, I'll just go through this slide. What it, some of the, some of the, one of the assumptions we made, the tentative budget includes a 15% rate increase and that's part of the five-year approved plans, five-year approved plan, rate plan. And if you look here on the expenditure side, salaries and benefits, you can see the salaries and benefits went up due to merits and other benefit increases, and that was part of Nick's presentation a little bit earlier. And then looking at services and supplies, the next line item down, you can see that went up by $454,000. The main component of that is $127,000 of that is for internal service charge, and that's a change. Professional in-service, professional service increase of $195,000, sludge hauling increase of $32,000, and the effluent water, where we're going to be taking the supplementation for, in the tune of $100,000. And that's what makes up the $454,000 component of that. Looking at the, the lower component, the capital outlay, you can see that we...
Do you want, you want questions as we go?
Sure.
Maybe we can help?
Yep, please.
Speed the process up a little bit. Can you explain on the professional services in 3202? We usually have 40 to 45,000 and now it's 200,000. Are we doing something different?
Yes. And that was, that was the increase of 195,000. What that increased for is, over the next series of three to four years, we want to develop a master plan in our sewer system. It's something that we don't have. And so we want to take the collection system, start with the collection system first, and start developing the master plan so that we know the complete comprehensive structure of our collection system, how old it is, what pipes we're going to be doing, are we going to be cleaning it, when we're going to be cleaning it. So developing the master plan for both the collection, the treatment, and the reuse side of the entire sewer system. This, this 195,000 is only the collection system. This is only the beginning of it. So next year, we'll be talking about probably the reuse side, the following year, probably the treatment plant. But when you look at, you know, our other divisions, everyone has master plans and it's not something that we've had in the past, so we want to develop that. So that was the increased cost of the 195,000.
Is that an increase of a person or just, are you hiring more staff?
No. That would be hiring a consultant to help develop a master plan for the collection system.
Had one other one in that budget. Can you explain to me, it's, you'll probably know it by the title, I'll do that instead of the number, communication fiber for, of 135,000, and it looks like it's tied to a welfare grant or something, but I can't tell what, what are we doing there?
What that is, is part of the, it's called SCADA, the, it's, it's an acronym for the control upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. That's all part of the wastewater treatment plant improvements.
But is it a fiber? I mean, is it to do electronic?
It's, yes. It's a fiber system to upgrade the computer system so that we can integrate controls in more of an automated fashion.
Thank you.
One more question, David. You have, have you projected this out for any further than 2016 or is that just, this presentation is only going this far, but do you have numbers projected forward for future years?
We, we do. And we presented all that to the Utility Financial Oversight Committee. We projected a five-year capital improvement plan to them, but the approval to meet the financial policies was only for this fiscal year. But we do plan on, on a five-year basis.
But all that material is presented to the Utility Oversight Committee, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So then, just in the last part of this, is the capital outlay, the capital side of it, and you can see it's a little over $13 million, and that's going to be funded through a combination of the state revolving loan fund, which is the, the bond, the bonding that we had done two years ago, cash from our rates. And so it's a multitude of, of funding this, and that was part of the capital plan that was presented to the Utility Financial Oversight Committee. Any questions specific to the sewer fund? Okay. Then looking at the water fund? Do you want to go to the fiscal summary? So same thing, the bullets on this is, the, the projections include a 6.5% rate increase for capital projects, and that's that rate increase, which is part of the five-year plan, 6.5% effective July 1. In this line item here, you can see that the salaries and benefits on the expenditures went up. Again, that was presented by Nick about why the salaries and benefits go up. Services and supplies increased by 974,000. And the reason for that, there's really five main reasons. And the first of them, I'll go through these and can answer questions if you have them, is the, there's $126,784 water purchase, state purchase increased, so what we're paying for the Marlet Hobart water went up significantly, and that's about $126,000. The, the item Supervisor Bagwell talked about this morning, and that was the, to finish, the water meter replacement service for about 635,000, building and repair maintenance increase of 30,000, and the internal service charge that Nick described, and that was $178,708.
David, on the building, repair, and maintenance of $30,000 increase, that's just for maintenance upkeep on the water facility itself and the building? Why would that not come out of capital improvements or any other fund?
Well, it's, what, 30,000 is actually, it's, it's for some of our wellhouses. Some of the roofs are starting to fail in our, in our wellhouses. So that was really to, to, the, the building and maintenance repair budget, that's what we're doing. We're taking these buildings that, that cover the pumps and the roofs are failing on those and we have to replace them. And that's why it was put under the building and repair and maintenance fund.
Is that the way it's handled throughout the city? So if departments have buildings, they would take it within their own funding or would they take it out of capital improvement funding? Like the roof over the community center or other roofs? How is that handled?
Yeah, it's a little bit different because those are enterprise funds. So those are built into the rates that the water and sewer users pay, so...
So this is a general, using the enterprise fund? You have a certain amount or percentage or penny amount or some allocated for building and repairs?
It's in the rates.
In the rate itself, it's set aside. So how much do we have in that? I mean...
Well, I mean, I don't know what the numbers...
It can only be used on the water or sewer buildings?
The water rates.
The water rate can only be used on buildings that are...
That's correct. That's correct. It's a set aside line item, only can be used for water, repair of water buildings. That's it.
Okay. And could we get an idea of what, how much dollar amounts in there, not today, but at some juncture? I'm just curious.
As far as how much we spend there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I could give you a list of the last five years of what we've spent.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Next.
And then the last item there is, when you look at the capital outlay, the capital side of it, you can see we're planning about $3.7 million to fund capital that, again, that's funded through the state revolving loan fund and from cash from rates, a combination thereof. Any questions on the water side?
I don't see any up here.
Okay. So moving on to the sewer. Sorry, stormwater. If you want to go to the next slide. So again, some of the assumptions we made, one of the assumptions was, on the stormwater, we didn't have the five-year rate plans. So one of the assumptions we did made, though, there'd be about a half a percent increase in the revenue coming in, just based on growth that comes in to this, to the stormwater fund. So that's based on growth within Carson City. Looking at this, the services and supplies we talked about, our salaries and benefits went up and that, those are the amounts listed up there. Services and supplies on this budget was increased by about $93,000. And the main reason for that is there's a $22,000 professional service charge and a $64,371 charged for the general fund, the internal services charge. That $22,000 for professional service charge, what it's for is for floodplain mapping. It's specific to flood depth mapping grid. We have to hire a consultant to do this. It's part of our community rating system that we have, is in our insurance program to help keep rates low here in Carson City. And so we're going to need to hire a consultant. And so we're going to need to hire a consultant to do this, this, this mapping. It helps us keep in good standing with FEMA, and it's going to help us with our emergency planning, is a tool also, to know where areas could change in flood first. So that's what the increased charge was for the professional services. And then in this fund, we have about $533,000, well, not about, we have $533,000 for a capital outlay.
What is this $64,000 for in the general fund service charge?
Those are the charges that were, that Mahoney and Associates do, the internal service charge, so it's the cost allocation. So it's the charge for finance, or the charge for treasure, it's all the general fund departments that do work for those funds, HR, finance, the treasurer, the district attorney, all those funds that do work for, they get charged to the general fund, but they do work for the other funds.
So do other funds pay for it, or it just comes out of stormwater only?
No, all the other funds are paid for it.
Okay, I didn't see it on the other pages.
Yeah, it should be on there. Yeah, it's an internal service charge, general fund.
I see it, I'm sorry, I missed it. $178,000 out of water.
Water, sewer, all the, the streets funds pay it, all the, all the other-
You're right, you're correct. I apologize. Thank you.
Further questions of the board on the stormwater, the sewer, or the water? Are we ready for a motion? Motion's in order. Go, Supervisor Aboud.
I move to accept the report of the Utility Financial Oversight Committee that includes the budget for water, sewer, and stormwater from their March 24, 2015 meeting, as published.
Motion by Supervisor Aboud, well-stated, by the way, thank you. Seconded by Supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion.
Yes.
Discussion's in order.
Can we amend the motion to include also the fourth recommendation for the supplemental water?
Thank you. I accept that and add that to my motion.
Somehow, isn't that in the, isn't that, isn't the 100,000 already in the budget that's there? So do you have to do that separately? That's what I thought. Okay, we'll do it. Do it anyway. Huh? Doesn't hurt.
Just for clarity.
Just for clarity, doesn't hurt. Okay. So will the, to make the, maker of the motion will accept that modification, the second does. So the motion as modified would now include the approval of the fourth recommendation from the Oversight Committee that includes the charge from the sewer fund to the wa, oh no, from the water fund to the sewer fund. Okay, all right. On the motion discussion, Supervisor Shirk.
Nick, on the bottom of the page, the agenda item, the fourth item, it's title number nine, can you just briefly give an overview of the interlo, interlocal agreement relating to water service between Douglas and Carson City to determine the cost of the water?
So this is for the Douglas County, the agreement that we have with Douglas County for, for water. And it's, I believe it's about a ten, a 10-year agreement, and every year, they spell out how much we'd be paying for that water. So instead of itemizing each specific one, that's in the agreement. So it spells out by year, how much we'll be paying per thousand gallons of water.
Do you recollect what that is?
Well, currently, it's just under 70 cents a gallon. I believe, I believe it's about 68 cents per gallon, and every year, that incrementally goes up.
That's per thousand gallons?
Per thousand gallons, thank you.
What, what is the top, it would top out in the, in the timeframe?
92, 92 cents per thousand.
92 cents, I mean, but that's lower than what we charge citizens, correct?
It is.
I'm sorry. Apologize, this, all I asked was, it was lower than we charge citizens, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay carried unanimous, okay. Now let me ask the board, do you want to take up the redevelopment? If, if it's not going to be long on the redevelopment authority?
We could, we could do the other funds probably in about five, I could just go through them really quickly, the other funds, and then we can do redevelopment, we could probably be done in just a few minutes.
I don't know.
I promise.
Because I don't know if that's possible or not.
Just that we can propose that.
Can we take odds on that?
Well, we've talked a lot about the other funds already.
Yeah. All right, what we're going to do is, we're going to, what other funds do you have to talk about, Nick?
Well, basically, we wanted to talk about the capital projects fund, which is the five cents. We've talked about that already. The other, this is the, this is the fiscal summary for those. We want to talk about quality of life, RTC, and streets. Quality of life is sales tax, so that's a 4% increase. RTC is a, is a gas tax, and streets is a sales tax and a gas tax. So the quality of life fund basically gets the, the quarter cent sales tax. So these are, these are the projects that we're anticipating, or this is the, the budget. It's fairly similar to, to prior years, the only other, we've got about 200,000 in the new gym that's going in there from the parks capital amount. And then 40% is open space, 40% is capital, 40% is park maintenance. On the, this is the RTC fund, again, we get 9 cents of the gas tax, and this is where we have some salaries, and then, you know, some capital. Streets, again, we have gas tax, sales tax, and again, it takes care of the roads, basically. We want to talk a little bit about the building permits fund, we're keeping the amount the same, we had talked a little bit about that. Cash balance, we're estimating to be about 160,000 at the end of fiscal '16. And then here's the, the fiscal, the fiscal summary. So those are the major, and then we got workers' comp fund, again, you know, this is our sixth year of self-insurance, nothing's really changing there, we're going to, we, we estimate that we're going to have about 3.1 million in cash at the end of the year, which we'll be using for the heart-lung issues in the future. And then there's the fiscal summary for that. Then, you know, we did, we wanted to talk a little bit about the general fund long-term analysis, I don't know if you wanted, wanted me to go into that a little bit. We did a five-year plan, we basically assumed, you know, C taxes were going to be 4% a year growth, property taxes are going to be level grow at 3%, and then the other minor growth amounts in the, the other minor revenue categories. On the salary side, again, we've, we've got contracts with a lot of our unions, we put those into our projection. PERS, workers' comp, group medical, we increased, group medical was the main one by 7.5%. And most of these other things, we, we basically kept, we kept, you know, at the status quo. So we put all this in, into our model, basically, and, and this is the five-year projection. The 2016 numbers, those are the ones that we, we presented to you. They'll be tweaked, changed a little bit based on, on, on the motions that were made. But in 17, 18, 19, and 20, these are, these are the, I think the main thing that we want to talk about here is, are the capital transfers. So if you notice, in 17 and 18, the, the transfers based on these projections aren't going to be very much, because we use a lot of that, we're using a lot of it in '16. But, you know, in 19 and 20, the numbers start growing quite a bit, so it looks like in '20, we're going to have almost a million dollars. We are going to have the 100,000 extraordinary maintenance fund throughout the five-year plan. So this is, you know, hopefully, the, you know, the economy starts getting better, and the revenues start increasing, and if that happens, then, you know, we could obviously, you know, transfer more money to capital would be the, would be the plan. But again, the main thing we want to do here is, is maintain that 5% fund, that minimum 5% fund balance. And I think that was it, that's all that I had on those.
Outside of the construction, the CIP.
Right. We need to talk a little bit about the CIP, that's a separate item.
Let's hold off on the CIP for a minute, see where we're going on. Let's see if we can get, work through this, if we can, if we can't, we'll see where we go. All right. Motion.
I move to approve the proposed budgets for quality of life fund, RTC fund, streets fund, workers' comp fund, and building permit fund.
And probably all other funds.
And all other funds.
Motion, and second on the motion discussion.
Yep, can you go back to your first slide?
Which one was that?
Where you started.
Capital.
Okay. Next one.
So this is RTC?
Yeah, and if we look at RTC, that would be, is that account number 256?
250.
250?
256 is streets.
Right.
Streets maintenance.
So we're going to have a decrease of roughly 10%, correct? As shown on page of the, of the special revenue fund.
Right, and that's mainly due to, I think that's mainly due to grant. And then we're using some of the fund balance, too.
Okay. So the street fund, the street fund is 256, correct?
Again, there's some, I think there's some grant, grant amounts in there, and-
This is down 20%.
This is down 20% by the book, in your white book.
Right, I believe, I believe that's probably the, there's a transfer, is that transfer That's, that's a transfer from RTC, so basically, we, RTC transfers in money, if they have it, into streets, right? Is that right, Sherri?
Yes.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, whatever 250 is not using for the year is pretty much slated for street maintenance. So we do 250 first, figure out what capital projects we're going to do, and then whatever's we're not using, we'll move to streets.
So I imagine there's, there's probably, Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they, they usually kind of wait up for a couple of years on some of those street ceiling projects, so this is probably the odd year, I suspect, on that, so.
Okay. Just backing up again, sorry. 879 was transferred in, correct?
That's the plan, that we're going to be transferring, correct, in 2016? In 2016, that's, that's what we're proposing to transfer in, and then the prior year, it was a million, 248. That's this year.
Okay.
So we're going to be transferring less this year, or in '16 than we-
Why?
-when we did in '15. Because, because they're using it in RTC for projects.
Rather than street maintenance.
Right. But RTC is basically a streets fund as well, so the, I mean, they're using it for street projects, but they're, they're just different, they have capital projects that they're going to be doing in RTC.
But it's not, it's not filling the potholes, which we discussed earlier.
Correct.
Correct?
They'll be filling the pot, typically, they fill the potholes with, with the streets maintenance.
With this, with this fund, which we just transferred 300,000 into.
That's the plan, assuming the money comes in.
Correct. So we took money, we have less money coming in, but we're moving money from other parts of our budget, CTX, or whatever fund, and moving it into here, because we still do not have enough fund, funding for street maintenance, regardless of what we're doing. I mean, we're, we're 20% less overall, correct?
That's probably fair.
So we really, we're not fixing anything, we're moving money around, still have the same deficits, and still going to have the same streets and the same conditions, regardless. That's my opinion. I, I think this street maintenance needs to be looked at, at a board level, a discussion, because we're moving money around from one side to the other side of the tracks, and then moving money from another fund over here to, to, to build up the fund. Doesn't make sense.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe RTC spends a lot of time with these budgets. I mean, they're, they're, they're basically the watchdogs of those budgets, so I know there's, there's a lot of time spent in RTC on that, on that commission with these budgets, but-
Well, I think what RTC needs to look at is, there's not enough money in this budget, we need to find more money.
Okay.
And then, your next slide?
That would be-
Quality of life.
Quality of life, okay.
And in the book, what department number is this? Or where would it be?
254.
254?
Yeah. There's, there's three different divisions. The open space, the parks capital, and the parks maintenance.
Too many pages, aren't there?
I know. It's a beast.
And again, the quality of life is going down.
Actually, the revenues should be going up by 4%.
I'm looking at the right-hand side, it says percent change in budget.
Right, there could be, mainly because of, we're using fund balance, so we're reducing the fund balance a little bit in some of those. Is there a main?
No, that's just somewhere.
Right, the actual revenues are going up, but we're, we're using, the fund balance is going from 62 to 29 in the parks maintenance account. And then the, we're, we're using fund balance, obviously, in the parks capital account, because we're building the gym. So the beginning balance.
Federal grants are going down.
Federal grants are going down, too.
On the quality of life park maintenance?
Okay.
On capital outlay, in 20, in 14, 15, we had 12,000, 15, 16, we have zero, 13, 14, we have zero. Why does it move around from zero to 12?
The 12,000 is some furniture and fixtures that they bought?
It was a one-time.
It was a one-time, it was just a one-time need that they bought, I'm not exactly sure what it is, I don't know what it is. But it's under furniture and fixtures, it's 12,250 dollars, or 12,500, as we're estimating.
And then on 254-5046?
Okay.
On the total, for 14, 15, it's 7 million, on 15, 16, it's a little less than a million.
Right, we're building, we're building the MAC with that money, using that money for the MAC.
And once the MAC is completed, the maintenance of the MAC will come from this account?
And the general fund.
And the general fund as well?
Right, we have money in the general fund to pay for the maintenance of the MAC.
Why would the maintenance for the MAC come out of the general fund?
I think, I think it was agreed, I think there was a percentage, a percentage coming out of the general fund and a percentage coming out of, of this fund.
Again, for the record, Roger Mullen Dorff, Parks and Recreation Director, you have in your, in your general fund budget, you have a budget for the MAC listed in there, I think it's a $132,000 annual budget, and it's, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I think about four-
25.
Yeah, but getting back to the MAC, it's 132,000, a portion of that comes from the general fund, a portion comes from, from the 20% park maintenance, simply because there's not enough money in park maintenance to fund the total budget of the MAC. The 20% park maintenance also funds other projects that were developed by quality of life funds as well.
Is it the 132,000 yearly, or I-
That's for the first six months of the operations.
So yearly, for the building maintenance of the MAC, it's 260?
Well, you could probably, it'd probably be safe to say it'd be 260, but you have to understand that this is the very first year of the MAC, of course, it's a brand-new building, there's a lot of unknowns in budgeting a building that hasn't existed before. And it's kind of, actually, kind of an advantage of having the first year of it be the latter half of the budget year, the six months, because it gives you an opportunity to accurately budget for the following year.
Further discussion on the motion, all in favor, signal by-
Further discussion on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed nay, carried unanimous, okay. I think if it's okay, we're going to take up the Rovantini matter on 30C, then we're going to take up the rate design, can we do that, I think? Mr. Plummel, where are you? Where is he? So we're going to take up item number 30C, this is, didn't... Yeah, disclosure's in order, yeah.
NRS 281A point four two oh requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. The developer on this project, Mr. Newver, has a daughter who works for my business as a bus girl. And however, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by the relationship. The public policy of this state favors the right for me, as a public official, to perform the duties for which I was elected and to vote, provided I properly disclose. I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this private commitment, and because this is not a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be voting on this matter.
Okay. Mr. Plummel, this is, how many times will we stand to this, what, this is the third, this is the second, third time?
Good afternoon, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This was, this map was approved in, Dan, I didn't have, get the exact date, I think it was, it was 2005 or 2006. It was extended by the Board of Supervisors in 2009, and then again in, and then again in 2012, I believe, was, was the next extension, so. This is a, this is a tentative, this is, this item is actually to introduce on first reading an ordinance to approve an amendment to the development agreement to extend it for another three years to September 2008. Part of the condition, so attached is the ordinance and the proposed amendment to the agreement, what, what is being proposed by the applicant with concurrence of city staff is that in exchange, that, that this extension is conditioned upon them completing certain public improvements along the street frontage. I know we're, short on time on this, I had some graphics I could put up if needed that shows the area on this, and, and shows, shows the sidewalk improvements and other improvements that, that would be made. But we felt that in terms of engineering, looking at this, and staff, and the connections that are out there, there's, there's sidewalk to the, to the north of the project, there's commercials to, across the street to the east. They're proposing to expand the road, which is currently just a dirt, dirt ditch with drainage, and there's pictures of what, how kind of the recent rains have eroded the ditch, so they would be extending the, the pavement, building new sidewalk and drainage improvements, and also along the frontage, that Cochise frontage, extending water, water and sewer lines. So there'd be some benefit, that they will also be doing ADA improvements to connect to those corners, so on, on three off-site corners, taking where there's existing curb sidewalk and curb ramps, those would be brought up to compliance with ADA, so our recommendation is approval of the extension, subject to them completing those improvements this year. This is a 75-unit subdivision, again, we, we know that in the past, the, clearly the board has said in these past extensions that we, at some point, we have to stop just granting extensions for these things. We think they've come to the table with something that actually provides some improvements. I would also note additionally that it, for, for this area, there's been no other zoning, no changes to the planned unit development code that would, we feel would necessitate any specific changes to the, to the development itself. So I'd be happy to answer questions with that, I could, and if we need to throw up pictures, I just need to plug in my computer real quick.
Questions, Mr. Plummel?
Yes.
Questions in order.
Lee, are you comfortable that the modifications that are being done, the improvements, will effectively mitigate some of the flash flood issues that we had last year? Since I was caught in that, I know how bad it was.
I'll have, we have the engineering manager Danny Rodder here to help with questions, who also helped with the agreement amendment.
Danny Rodder, engineering manager. The, a lot of the, the flash flooding comes from the east to the west. This, these improvements are drainage primarily along Cochise, but also a valley gutter going east-west and drop, putting two drop inlets to facilitate some of that water on the surface down into the storm drain system. So it will mitigate some of that, some of that surface flow will go below ground. If it's a debris flow, like some of the stuff we saw coming off the mountain, that would probably end up just clogging and continuing on, but with the curb and gutter system and the extended pavement, better off than a roadside ditch to just erode away.
Supervisor Monkowski, then supervisor Shirk.
So Danny, if I can just cut to the chase on this, my understanding is that in a worst-case scenario, if the developer never builds this development, by giving this extension, by granting this extension, the city's going to get street improvements and drainage improvements that benefit the city. Is that correct?
That's it.
Thank you.
The extension only affects phase three, not, or does it affect phase two and one, giving the extensions to all phases?
Yeah, the, the extension is for the filing of the, of phase one, so, and then there's already provisions in there for how long they have after those, after the filing of a previous phase in which to file the, the next phase of development. So that those subsequent phase timelines would stay in place, but this extends the beginning of the, of the project out for three years.
And then, okay, extends, this project got three years, does it, it doesn't extend the other ones at all?
It would. They all, they all slide three years farther.
So when's the last extension expire then?
If, so going, yeah, going back, looking at the agreement, I think it's two years between phases, so if, if they have until September 2018 to record the phase one, they have two years within which the next succeeding map for the succeeding phase must be filed. So there'd be, from 2018, the next one then would be 2020, the next one would then be 2022, assuming they use all the time up to filing those previous maps.
I understand the work is going to be done on Cochise, although I think we get the improvements, I don't think there's much traffic down there, there's surely not, I've been down there numerous times, I don't see any pedestrians walking the sidewalk, but I, I like the idea we get the improvements. But the drainage that you were talking about, Danny, was on the side streets, they're going to be adding drains there? Am I understanding that correctly?
The storm drain inlets would be placed on the corners, north and south, along Cochise, so two drop inlets along Cochise on each side street.
Are they tied into the storm drain, or just?
They would be a drop inlet tied to the storm drain, yes.
I know the board has always asked for, or in the previous, asked for compensation. Is this the new compensation that we're going to be, are we going to be asking this of each applicant who comes forward and wants an extension? Will we be asking for street improvements? Or did they volunteer and come forward, or is this a new standard that we're going to be, if we impose this on one, or is this, they volunteered to do it?
Yeah, they volunteered, so in, in coming forward to us, they, they started the conversation with us, saying here's what we're, we're willing to do for, for this extension, this is how, so, so they've, they've offered this in order to come to you to ask for an extension.
It's not a new standard that we're going to impose, that's what I was clarifying. Offhand, do you know the cost impact of what they're doing, the improvement that we're gaining as a city?
The applicant's engineers here, and they said about 250,000.
Thank you. I mean, thank you to the homeowner. No, thank you to you.
Public comment? Anybody? Bring it back to the board, motions in order.
Bill number?
105.
I move to introduce on first reading bill number 105, an ordinance approving an amendment to the development agreement between Carson City and Rovantini LLC to extend the tentative planned unit development map expiration date to September 6, 2018, for the development known as Clear Ridge View. Clearview Ridge, located west of Cochise Street, between West Rovantini Way and West Overland Street, east of Voltaire Street, APNs 9-263-06, 07, 08, and 09, and to require the developer to complete certain off-site infrastructure improvements by December 31, 2015, and matters properly related thereto.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Jeremy, get your light on.
I meant to ask, what happens if they don't make the improvements by December 31, 2015?
Lee Plummel, the map, the map would expire per the terms of the agreement.
Thank you.
On the motion, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried unanimous, okay, let's take up item 31, this is the water connection fees, and then, I know, I've got Doc Gibbons back there, the historic stuff, bear with us, Doc, I could see you just fine, though. Ms. Engelmann, welcome back to the table.
Thank you. For the record, Andy Engelmann, Chairman, or Chairwoman of the Utility Financial Oversight Committee. For people who may not understand, the Utility Financial Oversight Committee is an independent committee appointed by the Board of Supervisors and reporting to the Board of Supervisors to oversee the rate hike money that was passed by the Board a couple of years ago. So that's, that's who we are. Last year, we came to you, Bruce Scott and I came to you and gave you the financial report for the budget, and at the same time, we told you that the committee, on a vote of four to one, had recommended raising the hookup fees, and suggested that you phase it in, give it some time, and so forth, and you've taken no action since then. On February 18, we met as a committee, and at my request, staff invited all the builders they could find in Carson City to come to the meeting with us, where we could discuss what kind of rate hike would be best for the Board. At that time, we had a presentation from CHS, I think that's the name of it, and, and we were shown, and you'll be seeing this graph in color, when Public Works gives their presentation. We were somewhat, I think, all surprised by the small amount of the hookup fee charge in Carson City compared to surrounding counties. In any event, we discussed it with the builders, and what we were concerned about was equity, that the people of Carson City are paying a rate hike fee of approximately 15% a year, and we felt that, in all due fairness, that the builders' hookup fees should also be increased. We talked with Aaron West, who represented the Builders Alliance, and Mark Turner, and by, it was a three-hour meeting, by the end of the meeting, they were about the only ones left, and, and, and they suggested a 20% increase over a five-year period, and not to begin until, and this actually was with finance and so forth, starting date of July 1, 2016. At the time, I, I was concerned because we didn't really have anyone at the meeting to represent commercial building. We had apartments, that kind of thing, but we didn't have anybody that might represent manufacturing or industrial or anything along those lines. So we really didn't get much information, but we did approve the rates that are in your packet. At the end of your packet, you'll find the minutes from that February 18 meeting, which you may want to take a look at. And now I think that unless you have some further questions from me, the staff has a presentation to make on what the actual rates are.
I got some questions up here, but again, I want to compliment you as the chair and your committee for undertaking this, this is somewhat controversial issue, but you've done it with, with grace, diligence, and some background, background on it. And it's extremely important what this utility oversight committee does, and at least from my own perspective, it, recommendations are very weighty and meritorious.
Thank you, sir, that means a great deal coming from you.
All right, go. Mr. Brucat, oh, wait a second, I got questions up here.
Andy, my question for you is, I agree with your comment that looking at the recommendations and the data in the presentation, there's very little information on the impact that, that these changes could have on the commercial industrial trades. So is your committee comfortable that you've got enough data to address that, or would your preference be to have additional time to, to have another meeting with commercial developer, commercial industrial developers, so that you can get enough data to make informed recommendations back to us?
Andy Engelmann, for the record, it, it would be difficult for me to say what the committee feels, because I haven't had a meeting of the committee to ask them how they would feel about this. Certainly, we serve at your pleasure, I think, don't see a problem, if you'd like us to go back in and look at commercial and so forth, I have no problem with calling a meeting of the committee.
Hi, Andy, again, thank you for your service on this, I really appreciate it. Was there any discussion on designation for these funds, so as to not, you know, be for services and hiring more full-time employees, that sort of thing? Was there any sort of discussion regarding that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, there was, in fact, I think Randy Bowling on our committee brought it up, what's going to happen to this money once it comes in, and we did discuss it with more or less of a consensus that there should be a reserve in the water fund, the same as we have a reserve in the sewer fund, particularly for, in case of emergencies, particularly with the drought that we're looking at right now. But we couldn't take any action or go into that in depth because we weren't agendized for it.
Lori.
Good afternoon, thanks for sticking with us. Was there any discussion, I noticed in the paperwork, that there was a recommendation to automatically add inflation at the end of the five-year period, was that discussed by your committee?
No, it wasn't. When I saw that in the paperwork, that was the first I'd seen it.
Newspaper's always ahead of the game. All right, I don't know what that meant, okay. Public, let's, I'm going to, let's go to the staff here first, and then we'll take public comment, and we'll come back here, okay?
Going to follow up. As Andy Engelmann mentioned, the funding, once you collect this, where will it go? How will it be used?
I think that's a better conversation to have after we give the presentation, if that's okay.
Okay.
Ready?
Okay, David Brucat, Public Works. So what I want to do is just do a high-level overview. What you have here in your packet is like 49 slides, those slides incorporate, you know, we had a very extensive conversation with multiple options given to the Utility Financial Oversight Committee, and we tried to pare down those options to bring back a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So the intent here is not to go through 49 slides, the intent here is to go through the summary of the recommendations from both Utility Financial Oversight Committee and FCS Group, and that's where we'll get into the, the indexing. And then the backup material is the information there, we'd be happy to discuss. With us, we have Krista Shirley from FCS Group, and she'll be able to answer any detailed questions that we have. So with this, we'll start with the water utility and the recommended actions, possible schedule, phase-in strategy, and then the same thing for the utility, the sewer. So what the recommendations were is to accept the hybrid schedule for connection charges, and really what this means is, two years ago, we brought forth recommendations, and we brought forth a certain type of recommendations on connection charges, and then those were not accepted, and so this is a, this is a hybrid of that, so that it gives Carson City more flexibility when it's dealing with businesses. And this hybrid schedule consists of a meter equivalency charge, and I'll, and I'll show you a chart on this in the next slide, but a meter equivalency charge of using, for all customers through one-inch meters except multifamily. Multifamily are charged 30% of the smallest meter size, and that's done through the calculations, and FCS can explain that in more detail, but that's looking at the data. And then customers with an inch and a half meter or larger are charged on a, on a demand, a million gallons per day.
David, that's 30% of the smallest meter size per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit.
So if it's a hundred-unit apartment complex, then they're getting, they're paying that 100 times.
Yes.
Okay.
And the next slide's going to give you just a chart of all this, this is just the verbal description of it. And then the, the next item is the adoption of the phase-in. The discussion, initially, we'd proposed a three-year phase-in, the committee had recommended a five-year phase-in, starting July of next year, which is, and you'll see in the chart, it was actually... is, and you'll see in the chart, it was actually close to six years. And then, this last part, which is this, once rates are fully implemented, adjust the rates annually, and what this is, is this is a recommendation from FCS Group, and that is that, to base it on a cost index, so things don't become stale, so that, this is an ongoing amount based on an index which is an industry use standard. And so, this is for the water side. This is the charge for the water side, and to explain this, basically, and it shows up there, is the meter size, so, it's not based on industry, it's based on meter size. And it's called a meter equivalency factor, this is a standard, American Waterworks Association standard, many people use this all through all meter sizes. Carson City wanted to go with a hybrid approach and say, we're gonna use that through the one-inch meter, and then after the one-inch meter, we're actually gonna go with a max-day demand charge, and that's so, it's based on how the people use their water, how much water they use. The more water you use, the more you'll end up paying. And there's some charts in, that we presented to the Utility Financial Oversight Committee that compared different businesses in town, and how all these meter different equivalencies impacted. We felt this was the best option to give flexibility to Carson City, so, and I just wanted to point that out specifically, so if it's industrial, manufacturing, even if it was a residential house, which I'm not sure if there are any over an inch-and-a-half, but it is based on their demand, so those who use it would pay accordingly through this calculation. And we can go through, if you want, at a later time, it's in your backup material, looking at these various charges. So, that's why we call this a hybrid approach. So, the water phase-in strategy, the recommendation, is that we do a five-year phase-in strategy, starting July 1 of 2016. So, what we show here in the chart is that's year two, that's why this looks like it's a six-year plan, but it starts in year two there, and that's where the charges would go, at the 20% a year, and fully being implemented on the sixth year.
Do you get that again for me? 20%, so 454 to 1,051 is not 20%, anyway, I'm looking at it, but, so, I don't understand.
Krista, just on that one.
We took, it was the, it was 20, it wasn't a 20% gap, it was 20% of the total amount. Yeah, that's right. Yes. Sorry.
David, if you'd back up one second, and go back to the slide, that one, that one right there, yeah. Parentheses, C, can you explain that one? Charges maximum day gallons per minute. Is there a limit to that?
Krista Shirley, FCS Group. So, the maximum day gallons per minute, as part of the permitting process, the engineering staff would work with the applicant in conjunction with city staff, they would work to determine, based on the type of business and other related characteristics, what an estimated maximum day water use would be for that specific customer. And then, based on the gallons per minute of that maximum day, they would be charged the 6219.
But not, are they charged per gallon as well? Is there any, if, do they have a plateau they reach, or a limit, or do they have no limit?
No, there's no limit. It's...
They, in their, in their monthly utility bill, they still have to pay per individual gallon of water that they use. This is just for connection, connecting to our system.
Okay, that's what I was alluding to.
Okay, you're through, go. Next one.
So, then, going on to the sewer side of it, again, the adopted schedule would be updating the CERC, which is a sewer equivalent residential charge. FCS Group took a look at all the data, and it supported updating the, what we call the CERC, from 250 gallons per day, or down to 200 gallons per day. And then, we modified, based on the usage patterns, the different, the different customer classes, and so, they'd be applied a different CERC value. The next slide will explain that more. Again, just a high-level overview, the adopted phase-in strategy was recommended at five years, you know, we had presented initially for a three-year phase-in, and then, once rates were fully implemented, the adjusted fee would be adjusted annually after that, to five years, based on a construction cost index. So, here's the, here's the schedule for it, and the customer class listed there, like single-family residents, what it shows, the next column over is the existing CERCs, and then, the column next to that, the existing charge. So, a single-family currently would be one sewer equivalent residential charge of $577. The proposed CERC would, in this case, stay the same, at one, and the proposed charge would increase to $4,493. And Ms. Engelmann was explaining, in the backup material, we have the comparison to the other utilities and surrounding counties, where our current charges are compared to where their charges are. This was really designed just to be a high-level presentation, but when we're done with the presentation, if you want to see this in your packet, or we can put it up here to show how we currently compare. So, we looked at the CERCs, and the CERCs went from 250 down to 200, and we adjusted, based on usage patterns, the CERCs, and what this chart shows is the comparison between the two of them, so there's been some slight changes.
Can I clarify on that? So, are you indicating from historical information that apartments need to be changed 0.65, because they're having a higher utilization? Then, and I'm just trying to understand what's happening in apartments and mobile home parks are going to increase greater than just the rate change?
Yes, that's correct. When we updated the definition of the sewer equivalent residential customer from 250 gallons per day to 200, we also looked at the individual classes, and so, the apartment unit was estimated before using 50% of a single-family residences' unit. With the historical data, it's actually using about 65% of a single-family residence that's now defined at 200 gallons per day, so under the new definitions.
Okay, and then, moving on, this is just the phase-in strategy. It was the same you saw on the water side, it would be starting in July 1 of 2016, and the same increases with the difference, instead of a straight 20%, the difference between that value. Maxing, reaching out on year six would be the full implementation. And that's just the high level in your packet, there's more information, and we'd be happy to talk about any of those slides or describe information better. This really was just to bring you the summary of the recommendations from both FCS and the Utility Financial Oversight Committee.
Okay, I've got a couple lights on up here, I don't know if they were on, first part, I'm gonna go to the public here in a minute, if the lights on, go.
Dave, you mentioned you could put the slide up that would show the current rates versus those in the surrounding areas, if I understood you correctly? And could you follow that slide up with the next slide, where we will compare with those after the increases?
So, this is looking at the water connection charges, so you can see our current connection charge for water is $454, and then, our proposed charge would go to $3,440, and you can see that we're still, Douglas County and Lyon County, you know, are significantly more on the water side.
How long has our rate been at 454?
The rate was changed in 2000, so the rate was, the rate used to be $4,540, and it was, during the downturn in the economy, it was cut down to the, to the $454 for both water and sewer, was cut significantly.
What year was that, just, if you knew?
Two, 2010.
2010?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, this slide is the comparison, looking at the sewer side, our existing charges for sewer are $577. The proposed charge would go to $4,493, and you can see the other comparison, the other utilities surrounding us.
Thank you.
Excuse me, public comment on this issue? Anybody? Dorothy, come on up, or Rob? The Marines can take backseat on this one, Rob. Dorothy, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
People were singing your praises the other day.
Maybe not after this, huh? No.
Well, we'll be quiet then. All right, go.
For the record, my name is Dorothy Timian Palmer, I reside at 2600 Manhattan Drive, and I have been a resident of Carson City since 1984. I'm here today to address the water and sewer connection fees for new development, and I believe they should be paid by new development and not placed on the backs of existing ratepayers. I have spent my entire career as an engineer in the development of water resources, of which 10 years was spent here in Carson City as Utilities Director. So, when I started with Carson City, I don't know if a lot of you know this, so I'll give you a little history lesson, the state engineer of Nevada would not sign a subdivision map for Carson City, because he was, he felt that Carson City couldn't prove how many water resources they had, what type they had, what was already dedicated, what needed to be held in advance for lots that already were created by parcel maps, and what was needed for future growth. So, you had no new development on subdivision maps. It was all this crazy parceling, which is really bad development. You couldn't get a Lowe's, you couldn't get a Home Depot, you couldn't get a lot of the major players that you have here now, because the state engineer wouldn't sign subdivision maps, and when someone called about water resources, nobody could answer the question about what Carson City had. So, because of the Board of Supervisors and dedicated Carson City staff and organizations like BON, you went out and acquired water resources and said, we're gonna take care of Carson City today and all future growth. So, Carson City went out and bought water resources for future growth in Carson City. Carson City also made the decision at that time that whenever they replaced infrastructure or looked at installing new infrastructure, they would do it for new growth, so you wouldn't have to do it twice, you'd only have to do it once. But, those water rights and all that infrastructure fees that were gonna benefit new growth would be paid by new growth through connection fees. When a new user connects water or sewer, they are to pay their fair share of connecting onto the system. That cost to connect and the demand that that new growth puts on the system, either in water rights or infrastructure, should not be on the back of existing users. The city has shown in its dedication to new growth, you've shown that you have a dedication to growth and pro-business, because you went out and you bought water rights for future users. You went out and installed infrastructure for future users, that the users at that time always felt they would be paid back when new development connected into the system, they would pay their fair share on getting on the water and sewer system. And that bond was very instrumental in making that happen, because they knew they needed that future infrastructure and future water rights for that future new growth. And that's why today, when you look at this, and I want to say something about the water slide connection fee, Lyon County pays a lot more than that, so if you go back to that, those developers also have to bring their water rights, and that doesn't exhibit that, that only exhibits the infrastructure fee side. Those developers and builders in Lyon County also have to bring water rights, which you already provided for developers in this community. So, that is probably twice that amount in Lyon County, if not three times. So, in Lyon County, if you want to build a home, you're probably gonna pay $12,000 bucks. Carson City, what is that, 400 and something? I have worked in water resources in all the states in the Southwest, and I do not know of a city that does not charge development what they believe to be the demand they are putting on their resources. But let's also remember that it really is the home or business owner that pays that connection fee, because that connection fee is passed down to that new homer, homeowner, or that new business owner. It might be fronted by the developer or the builder, but it's passed down. So, when you keep these fees low, does that mean they're gonna see that kind of decrease in the home or business? No, it does not. They're not gonna sell their product for any less than it's worth, and they're gonna put more profit in their pocket. But let me be really clear here today. I am a pro-profit girl, I am pro-business, I am pro-development, but I think everyone should pay their own way, and you should pay what the cost to the system, the demand to the system is, because Carson City residents went out, bought new water rights, paid for infrastructure, and that should be paid back by that new development. I'm very disappointed in myself, because I didn't show up five years ago, when Carson City decided to lower that fee. But I'm here today, because that was then, and this is now, and we are all on the upswing. I have read in the newspaper that the Planning Commission just approved some high-water users, new car washes, you're also getting a medical marijuana facility, I really don't care, but when they connect, they need to pay their fair share. If one wants to argue that a connection fee cost for a business is too much, then maybe you shouldn't have that business come to Carson City. You're very lucky, you have resources in your bank, you can decide, do I want a yogurt manufacturer that pays minimum wage but uses a lot of water, or do I want a high-tech facility to come into Carson City that uses a lot of water and pays a great wage? You guys get to decide that, because you're holding the water rights, you've got all the keys to the castle. You all have the ability to use Carson's resources to Carson City's advantage, by not charging new development the appropriate water and sewer connection fees, whether commercial, industrial, residential, puts all of Carson City at a disadvantage. I think if the majority of Carson City residents knew what these charts look like, knew that new development for the last five years really hasn't been paying their own way, perhaps won't pay their own way in the future, this room would be packed. I encourage you to raise connection fees to the appropriate level right now, and if right now can't be done, tomorrow's good enough. I don't believe in a phased-in approach, I believe that everyone should pay their own way. Thank you for your time and service to this community, I do appreciate you and the Carson City staff. Thank you.
Dorothy, let me ask you a question, just maybe a discussion point here, given your longstanding history in this area. Part of the reason why the rate was dropped was because there was no development period, nobody was paying, and it was not being used at all. And so, in that sense, it was, it was a rate design created by kind of an economic development method, using rate design, and when you say that, you know, that others don't pay those things, we, there are other places in the state where, you know, we give developers economic incentives that nobody else gets. Tesla's one of them, that's 1.1 billion. So, does those, those thoughts, I mean, and listen, from a purely economic standpoint, you know, if you're gonna set a rate, in my view, you ought to set it the marginal cost of what, you know, the marginal cost of what it is to serve that customer from connecting, and so, and I think that's what she's done here, pretty close to that. I think it's marginal, right? Or is it average?
It's an average.
Okay, well, we can debate that later, I mean, I'm a marginal cost guy, she's a profit lady, so, I'm a marginal cost guy. Anyway, you wanna, you wanna weigh in on something like that?
Well, you know, your water and sewer is a business, and, oh, sorry. Water and sewer is a business, it's a business here in Carson City, and you run the business, and you can't sell your product for less than it costs you to develop it, and water is what's gonna attract businesses to this area. And I'm, I guess we're all fortunate, Carson City is that a high-water user manufacturer didn't come in that pays low-wage jobs during this five years. So, I would use that water resources, I would keep the fees where they needed to be, because you only want development. You know, if you've got a home builder and he can't afford a $4,000 connection fee on the water side, or 4,000 on the sewer side, 10,000, maybe he shouldn't be building homes. That's the cost of doing business, and you should use those resources to attract business and not give them away for free.
Okay, I got you. I just have one last little aside, and it's just an aside, you know, and it's our business. For a while, Costco was selling 30-cent stamps for 29 cents.
Well, if you only decreased your connection fees by that much, I probably wouldn't be here.
Brad's got a question.
Dorothy, before you go...
Touche, Dorothy, you're all right, man, you're all right.
Dorothy, before you go, I'd like to point out that when Carson City went out and acquired their water resources, that in large part was because of your direction, so I wanna commend you for that, we owe you a debt of gratitude for that. And yesterday, when we spoke, you had indicated that when that happened, back in the early 80s, that there was, I don't know if it was a policy or just a general direction, but that a portion of the connection fees were to go back to the city to help pay for all those acquired water resources. Can you expand on that just a little bit, please? Because I had never heard... Because I had never heard that before.
Well, there's two parts to the connection fee at the time, up until I think it was lowered, was that when you bought into the system, if, and maybe you looked at this, I don't know, or, but when you connected to the system, and if you were a home and you used six tenths of an acre foot, and you would pay six tenths of the value of that water right. Now, some water rates were free when Carson City got the system from Southwest Gas, I believe, and then over time, the price of water's gone up. I think the last purchase you guys made that I watched was when you built the Carson City to Douglas County line, and you bought some Douglas County water for 8,000. So what happens is all that water, all those water rights would go in a big pot, some zero, some 8,000, and there would, you would calculate a base for what a water right was worth. So maybe a water right's worth 2,000 to a single-family home, maybe it's 1,000 bucks by the time you do all the math. So that builder, developer, manufacturer, industrial, no matter what the quantity of water is, they paid back that fund for those water resources, which would go to the water utility. And when they connected, and then they would pay a fee that was associated with all the costs that went into the infrastructure. That was all calculated at one time. So we knew what all that cost. So that's how you came up with infrastructure fees. I think the way it's being proposed is just fine. I just don't want you to forget the whole water right side of the equation and what Carson City did, going out and acquiring things and building things way ahead from schedule. Because Bob, you know, Mayor, you know, that if you were a private utility, you couldn't do any of that because the, the board, the board that the private utilities go in front of, the PUC, would not allow that. They'd say, "Oh, you can't do that. All those developers, when they come in, make them bring you water. And when they want to build something, let them go oversize it. You can't put that on the backs of existing ratepayers." But we could do it because we're a governmental-owned municipality, and you mapped your own future, you mapped how you wanted to go. So you could go out and say, "Well, really, we want 40% to be surface water and 60% to be groundwater." So we went out and acquired that kind of water right because we knew that's what was going to help in growth. We're very fortunate. Private utilities can't do that.
Well, I think, you know, Dorothy, following up on that little comment, and I don't mean to monopolize here, but it occurred to me the other day, actually, I was talking to one of your public works guys, that, you know, this, this, the issue of connection fees aside, the water rates in Carson City are less than our surrounding counties, no matter what, anyway. But you take that into consideration, and we don't have, we have, we have good groundwater here. We don't have the problems on water supply that our surrounding neighbors have. So there's something to be said about having water rates that aren't terribly high compared to your neighbors and not having the problems that our neighbors have. And I just, I think that's worth thinking about as to how that, how that situation came about. And I will tell you my own situation, my own analysis is, a lot of that came because of just what you just said, and you folks had that foresight a long time ago. So, all right, all right.
Thank you.
How you doing, Rob?
Good. How are you?
Well, I don't know, man.
So, Rob McFadden, I just had a couple of comments. I own some water rights in Lyon County, and when I'm speaking for, from that standpoint, like the last speaker, I would definitely want Carson City to have higher water rights because it makes my rights more valuable in Carson, or in Lyon County. I don't own a fraction of what the Villar Water Company does in Lyon County, but, you know, if I did, I would definitely have a different tone on this just out of self-interest. But my, my statement I want to make, I agree with you, Mayor, that having a competitive advantage is, is great for Carson City when it comes to attracting businesses or developers. And I'm looking at doing an affordable housing project in Carson, and, you know, it barely pencils for me now, you know, in the group that I'm working with. And, you know, anything that increases the cost is going to make that less likely to happen. Not saying that this would crush that, obviously not, but everything adds up. And, you know, with, with the market value, like the last speaker was saying, you know, when you have a market value that sets the price of the house, I completely agree with that. But what we have going on in northern Nevada right now is a housing shortage. You know, there's no rentals, there's very few houses on the market for sale. And, you know, being in the construction industry, I see, you know, the newspaper every day announcing another business moving here. And, you know, when I go to hire somebody, I realize that there's not very many people looking for work, you know, in the different positions I'm hiring for. My point is, is that every time I need to hire a skilled position, I shouldn't say every time, but the last time, they move from out of the area. And I think that's what's going to happen for the, you know, 10,000 to 50,000 jobs that are coming here over the next several years for all the companies that have moved here that, you know, need employees. So there's going to be a housing vacuum, and, you know, I think that Carson City really needs housing, and if we don't get it, and same with the rest of northern Nevada, you're going to have price instability, and it's going to be dramatic, and I think it's going to create the same situation we had 2002, 2006, and we all know how that ended. So I just wanted to make the point that I really support keeping the, you know, the hookup and connection fees affordable.
Thanks, Rob. And thanks for your service, too, man.
Thank you for yours.
All right. Nice. Mr. Turner.
Hi, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Mark Turner for the record, and I just want to make a few comments that may be a slightly different perspective that was offered by Ms. Palmer earlier. In 2009, they did reduce those water and sewer connection fees, and I can tell you that thanks to that, we were probably the very first builder to actually start sticking our toe in the water and building homes again. And, you know, Ms. Palmer may not feel that that incentive was valuable, but, but in fact, we do. We felt it was very valuable, and, and that, that incentive created real results that are visible in the north portion of Carson City. So I don't want to summarily dismiss that as, as something that was an ineffective or poorly thought-out policy. It was effective. I think at this point in time, the Utility Financial Oversight Committee has taken, taken a good amount of time to evaluate the need to increase water and sewer connection fees. And there's been some discussion, and I think there's been a consensus or a compromise as to, to how we move those up in the residential world. We've agreed that the proposed phase-in period is, is fair, and it will continue to give Carson City a little bit of an edge in attracting new homebuyers to our area, which I think that's what we want here. I don't think we want people to come to Carson City and then make the decision to go to either Lyon County, Douglas County, or Washto County. And if that's not correct, please say so. But, you know, it is an incentive, and we want people to move to Carson City. We want to add houses in Carson City that have, you know, fairly decent property tax bills and, and decent monthly utility payments. Those are cash flow streams that come into the city that are valuable, and, and they are worth incentivizing, in my opinion. I have a letter here from, from Aaron West from the Builders Association that he'd like to have entered in the record. I have a copy for everybody so I can just give that to you.
Leave it, leave it with the city managers coming over.
I'll be happy to do that.
He'll get his copies.
And then I just wanted to emphasize that I think that further discussion needs to take place with regards to connection fees and rates for commercial clients in Carson City. You know, this is a very competitive environment right now. Mr. Bonkowski knows very well in the commercial real estate world, we're struggling and fighting to, to be the top choice of companies that are shopping in northern Nevada and trying to find a place to land. We, in my mind, I'd love to have them here in Carson City. And if a reasonable or incentivizing type of water and sewer connection fee is the deciding factor for them, I would, I would be very unhappy if, if that tool were taking, taken away from people who are spending a lot of time to reach out to these businesses, let them know about Carson City, and hopefully win the favor and have them decide to invest in this community. We, we need new business here. It's been a long time since there's been any major relocations into Carson City, and we, we're in a very unique period of time in the economy where this can, can possibly happen again. We could really attract some great new business here that will pay good wages and, and benefit our city overall. So I just urge you to consider this side of, of the, of the argument as well before making your decision. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So, Mark, if, if, depending on where it goes today, we asked the Utility Oversight Committee and Public Works to sit down with commercial and industrial to discuss rates. Do, does residential want to be part of that conversation? Are you comfortable with the hybrid scenario that's been arrived at for the five-year phase-in?
I, I think that we had some discussion on that, and I think that, that we're comfortable with the five-year phase-in that has been proposed as of this time on the residential side. I would say that the commercial side did not get the opportunity to really have those discussions, and we don't want to form policy until the, the opportunity's been afforded those to discuss these things and make sure that we're not going to deprive Carson City to fully avail themselves of the opportunities that this recovery can offer. We don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot and have new businesses go to some of the competing municipalities.
Brad?
Mark, if we do decide today to ask the Utility Oversight Committee to look at this again so that they can analyze the commercial-industrial side, can we get a commitment from you and Aaron to make sure that the commercial-industrial builders show up and provide the data that is required?
Absolutely. We'll be very happy to reach out to those folks and let them know that there's going to be some conversations that take place that will affect them, so we'll make sure that we have people at the table that are knowledgeable and can give proper input.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board?
Well, I think just in general, since these rates aren't projected to increase for another year, that we actually have the time to do it right and make sure we're not harming an industry, and maybe, as you said, cutting off our foot to spite our face. You know, it's clear we need to increase the rates. And so I hope that that is clear to everyone, the rates are going up. But I do want to hear from the commercial venture. But I'd also like to discuss that I don't want this to linger. So are we talking about the utility oversight doing this in the next month or two? So I don't want this pushed out a year and then we're just stalling the increases. That's kind of my discussion point, too. I want a more rapid activity to occur here.
Andy Engelmann for the record. Clearly, I, it, it's, when my committee is available and they're all working people, this board has them all working very hard at various and sundry projects. So, but it, we will get it together as soon as we possibly can. It's convenient for Public Works.
Very good.
I have one more question.
You bet. Go.
I saw Nick come back in the room. Nick, is there any problem with designating these funds such that, you know, they're not spent on, on staff services and supplies?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Sure.
No, there's no problem at all. I mean, we could, we could do whatever you want with these funds. We can keep track of them. From the finance point of view, yeah, I mean.
Well, you can, I mean, a dollar's a dollar no matter where it's spent, but I think you have to keep in mind what the source of the dollar is and why it was charged.
Well, we, Mark, I mean, we have a, we have separate revenue accounts for these, for these dollar amounts, so we know exactly how much is coming in.
Right. And, I mean, just designating them for maintenance. I mean, I would like to see, you know, other projects come to the forefront, like fixing Brensway Canyon, for one, so we don't have an affluent issue.
Typically, we use, we used, when we used to have money back in the day, I remember those days, we would get a million and a half dollars probably a year in each fund, and we would typically use them for capital, is what we, is what we typically used them for, so.
Derek?
Yeah. Can I, can I just go on the record or maybe get a little bit of direction here? So, so if we, if we go back and we discuss that again, from, from our side, the, the presentation, the numbers are going to remain the same. So is, is the goal to, is the goal to give a certain side of the community that didn't have a chance to hear the presentation, to hear the presentation, or is the goal that they have information that we need?
Well, I suspect, one, I don't know if we're going to go down that road. I mean, I, I guess I can read the tea leaves a little bit and say, "Can't," but I think the answer to that is both. But I got, you know, the numbers are not going to change because FCS has put the numbers together. I mean, that's what it is. So, you know, there may be something that they, that the commercial folks say that, that tweaks something there that says, "Hey, maybe we want to take a second look at how this was calculated." But that said, you know, I understand the rate theory, so.
Right. And that, you know, it needs to be pointed out that that hybrid approach that we chose, that's not hybrid for residential, that's, that's hybrid for Carson City. And the reason, when you get bigger than a one-and-a-half-inch meter, we, we changed that so that users, typically commercial users, they're not being charged just because of the size meter out front. They're being charged on how much water they use, which is fair to the system and not just some number pulled out of the air. So, I mean, we looked, you know, with, with the help of our consultant specifically, to make sure that the rate we're charging is fair for every user, and that's, that's why we went to the hybrid approach. So I, I do want to go on the record and say that I feel like we did everything we could to, to, to make sure that-
Nobody's saying you, nobody's saying you didn't. I think what, and again, we'll see where the motion goes here, but I think what people are saying is, you know what, there needs to be a little bit more outreach in terms of explaining where we are, how it got there, and what, but the numbers, I mean, I understand. So, Sue Frazier, I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I might, I'm sorry, I, I did want to put on the record that I had received a phone call from Aaron West while I was back in my office, and he said, regardless of what we do, he would like to have a seat at the table if anything comes back to the committee. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. All right. Jim, sorry. I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me. Sue Frazier, go.
Yeah. I think the way this is heading, just from the discussion that's coming from this board is wrong on every level. You may not like to hear it, but we need to increase these rates. This is wrong. If you don't think the commercial industry has got notification, this can come back to every board meeting over every agenda item that we didn't give proper notice. The idea that we're sitting here saying, "Hey, commercial industry didn't get notice." I'm pretty sure they got notice. I'm pretty sure everyone knew that. If they don't, then you could say that about every agenda item that comes before this board. We didn't give proper notice. We didn't get the information out there. We didn't have enough town hall meetings. When does it stop? These rates have been low since 2009, and checking the records, there's only been four commercial buildings or businesses per year moved here. The rates are not bringing anybody here. Carson City water and hookup rates are not bringing anybody here. They're not hurting the housing industry. Housing are selling. There's not, you put a house on the market, it's gone pretty quick. Houses are selling that are built, and it's moving. Our, we're in the upswing. We've been lower than anybody for four years. We don't have money. When we raised water and sewer rates on citizens, we weren't too worried about that. This board elected in one meeting, I believe, to, to raise it. And here we are, talking about this when our rates are so low as compared to our surrounding neighborhoods. It's incredibly embarrassing that we're hurting financially at our sewer and water plant. We can't make the upgrades that we need. This money, we need to maintain our, our, our facilities as it is. The very idea that we're going to postpone this for any length of time, for one meeting, one week, one day, one hour, is just incredible. We just pushed through our whole city budget, millions of dollars, and we did it in one sitting, one time, in less than an hour. And here, we're going to take this back to utility committee, and if you want to have time for the commercial industry to come talk to them, then the meeting should be held in the evening, they're televised, we're having the meetings in the one through, maybe that's why they couldn't attend. So we need to have better regulations about what we're doing and how we're doing it, but this presentation here today, I, I see where it's going, and it's not right on any level.
Okay. Other public comment for it? Anybody? Issue's been teed up. Board comments? Anybody? All right. We'll bring it back to the board and see where we want to go, then we're not going to, after we take this one up, we're going to take historic commission up, and then we'll take a break. So.
I'll make a motion. Sure. I'll make a motion. I move to ask the Utility Oversight Committee to take this issue back, have another meeting to discuss the impacts of the commercial-industrial rate connection fees, and to bring this back to the board at a meeting in, say, within the next 90 days.
Can you amend that motion to include BON, since they want to see you at the table?
Yes. I would amend that. Yes, I would amend that motion to include the Builders Alliance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion.
Yeah, already, we have a problem here. First off, we're not bringing all Commercial developers into the, we're only bringing one person. So I want a list of all Commercial developers you say are not getting the word, so they can't come back and say, "Hey, we didn't have a seat at the table. We weren't given notice." You can't make such a motion so fragment to impose upon the citizens this mediocre motion that you're doing. This is incredibly wrong, and to pass this and vote in favor of this in such a fashion is beyond me. I'm voting no against this. I encourage all Board members to vote no against this, because you're not doing anything but forestalling something. You're not doing what you said you wanted to do of getting every Commercial broker developer here at the table.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? I were at the motion level, Dorothy. Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. 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 Opposed, aye? Three to two? Okay. All right, motion passes. Let's take up Historic Resources.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go.
Um, the motion didn't include, um, that you were going to raise the hookup fees. Am I to assume that you're going to raise the hookup fees and we're just looking at the rates? I mean, it, it affects how we meet.
Making the motion couldn't explain that.
Uh, to clarify, the motion, the intent of the motion was to get additional information on the impacts of the Commercial side of the rate increases, and then to bring the whole package back to us, because they don't want to raise just the Residential side now and then raise the Commercial later, they want to do the whole thing in one sitting.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And I think we're going to be doing this within ninety days, and I think I told you where, when you, when you first sat down, where I am on this issue, so, all right. Let's, uh, Jed Block, where is he?
You've got two today, but you were not so...
Where'd Doc Gibbons go?
He had a patient at 1:30.
Oh.
And I told him not to give Dr. Almirez any ammunition.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for letting, I know we have some, some families here for these Historic Preservation Awards. Each year, the Historic Resources Commission nominates and, uh, to recognize significant preservation accomplishment for either persons that have made significant contributions or, uh, or property owners that have preserved certain properties. So the Historic Resource Commission, uh, went through and have, have selected five recipients for this year, and I'll turn it over to Jed to go through. Oh, I, I will note before I turn it over for that, this is Historic Preservation and Archaeological Awareness Month, so we like to, that's why we bring these at this time every year, um, so we want to recognize that, and we'll move on, I'll turn it over to Jed for the awards. And Jed is the Historic Resource Commission Chairman.
Great, thank you for the record, Jed Block. Um, yes, it is Historic Preservation Month. Before we start off, there is a scavenger hunt that we've done for the last six years. There's a, one for the kids where you look at a picture and you have to find that within the confines of the, uh, confines of the Historic District, which is basically Fifth Street to, uh, John Street, Flashman Street, um, and all the way to, up to Mountain Street, over south to Stewart Street. And there's also an adult version for, there's forty, forty areas, and, uh, if you, when you, if you do answer all of them correctly, then you get thrown into a, um, a drawing for, I think it's, uh, Dinner at the Dells. So we've got that going on, and, and every year, we can give, uh, as many awards, up, I think, five or six awards, and, uh, typically, um, I think some of the awards are given, um, with probably not a good schedule. Uh, we gave an award to Mr. Hanifin a few years ago, but this year, we really decided that, uh, you know, the efforts of, of Lee and Myron Carpenter, Myron and Pat are here, um, for having an idea to, uh, try to save what they can, or save the Nevada State Prison, and knowing that there's probably two small buildings from the former Warm Springs Hotel that was there that Abram, Abraham Curry had, and then actually the Eagle that was on the Warm Springs Hotel is in the Eagles Hall. And, uh, so, and the Chamber of Commerce is going to be doing their annual meeting this year at the Nevada State Prison. But, uh, we just can't thank, from a Historic Preservation standpoint, thank Pete, Lee, and Myron enough for what they did, and, you know, it's, uh, obviously, there's, uh, Pat behind the scenes and definitely Lori behind the scenes that helped these two other gentlemen, and, and, and Lee as well, so our first award goes to these three individuals. And I think care to accept them are Pat, Myron, and Lori Livermore.
I didn't see Lori come in. Hi, Lori.
So, here's the first award, Lori, to Pete. It is, uh, for everything that he's done for Carson City and helping us preserve and Parks and Rec and the Cultural Commission, and, and it's at least what we could do on that. And then, uh, Myron, here's your award, which I think probably should go to you and Pat as well. And then, uh, here's Lee's award. And Mary Ellen was behind the scenes, helping Lee with the push as well. So, uh, thank you all so much, and thank your spouses, and, and, you know, I can't, can't say thanks enough.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Now, let's do a picture. Let's have the Board come down here if we could. Come on, let's go do a picture.
Jed, you want to get in there with me?
Feel free. Come on. Come on. Myron, Myron. How do I have?
Helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, I, Robert L. Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, to proclaim May 2015 Historic Preservation and Archaeological Awareness Month, and call upon all of our citizens to join their, to join together across Nevada in recognizing and participating to this special observance. We'll hold that and prepare.
Here we have an award for Dr. Thomas and Deborah Gibbons at 44 South Division Street. As you probably, most, you, you might know that, uh, this is on the northwest corner of Fifth Street and Division, and there's, as far as we know, there has never been a building on that site. And when you start talking about developing and things like that, and why projects tend to take a while, it's because of money. And, uh, Dr. Gibbons went through a lot. They moved the, the building forward so they could get parking behind it. Um, it's really a great contribution to the Historic District, even though it only emulates a Historic building and is not, but it was just a great contributing factor, so, um, we can't thank them enough. And he also got a Historic Preservation Award for the, it was, would have been the northeast corner of Second and Division Street where he had his, um, I, his, his business before as an optometrist. Um, so that was really good. Um, this, this house right here on, on 412 North Minnesota Street, um, it's actually, Maple Hill West is owned by Von and Chrissy Vett, and they have a demolition and a disposal company back in Minnesota. They came through Carson City in the eighties, and they don't really know why they stopped, but they stopped, they liked it, and they decided to, to buy this house, which was quite a fixer-upper. And on the left-hand picture, you can see a bay window. The previous owner had the footings and everything ready to go, but never completed it. Von and Chrissy did that. They also, about four years ago, put a new cedar roof on it and the ridge cap, and everything is in copper. Um, they did some improvements towards the back. In the right-hand picture, there's a small bathroom back there and a, and a small entrance way. And believe it or not, that house has about eight different colors of paint on it, and it is painted and touched up yearly. Um, the white fence there was replaced with another wood fence appropriate to the district, and, uh, they've sunk thousands of dollars into this building as well, so, um, I can't thank these people enough for what they've done. Um, I know, being an owner in the Historic District, it's, uh, it's, you have to love history because it's a money pit if you don't. So, uh, I, I'd like to thank everybody very much, and I'd like to thank the Board for having us come up and present this. And please, everybody that's out there, um, go to Carson.org, look for, for the Historic Resources Commission, and participate in our annual scavenger hunt. Thank you very much.
Thanks to your commission, too. Thank you. All right. Uh, City Manager, let me ask you a question. Do we need to take up, uh, the NND, NND, uh, issue, the quarterly report today, or you want to, can I delay that to the next meeting? I'm just asking you. I need to...
I, I think we could delay that.
Because I hear you want, I want to see what can be moved, because...
Sure.
We're going to get, at four o'clock, we're going to have five people being interviewed.
Correct, correct.
So, you know, it's going to be a little difficult. So what I think I'd like to do is, is, uh, delay, if the Board agrees with me, delay the, uh, thirty-two, the NND, uh, to the next meeting, or when it, or the next appropriate or available meeting. Take up, uh, next, in, in order here, we take up Cassie, then we would move, we would delay the Schultz Ranch LMD.
That was a fast.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. We could do that one.
We have to get back also...
Can we do that?
To CIP and redevelopment. We still have two more budget items.
All right, we'll do those, and then, uh, take up Item 34B as well. That's the Veterans Discount for the, um, can we pass, can we delay thirty-five, the Cultural Commission's annual report?
We have...
Wait, yeah, wait.
We do. Yeah, we have a couple members commissioned here.
Okay, guys.
Yeah, I think we can.
You and I can delay it.
We can.
I mean, this has been a long day, I mean, but, you know...
We can.
Uh, all right. We'll just move right along, then, folks. Go. Cassie, come on, shoot.
Nikki Aker, Carson City Health and Human Services, and I'm here to, um, talk about the memorandum of agreement between Carson City and Cassie. And, um, the item before you gives the, um, Mayor permission to sign that memorandum of agreement. This outlines, um, funding of the new shelter, including a $200,000 donation from Cassie. It also outlines some of the duties of Carson City and Cassie, and, um, under some, one of those duties for Cassie, I just would like to let the Board know that, um, Cassie has, they've had representatives that have been actively involved in the construction plans to date, and, um, Cassie has been a great partner to work with, and I've also brought Lisa with me to, um, give a little bit of her side of it and answer any questions if there are any.
You okay with the agreement, Lisa? Memorandum?
I am very comfortable with the agreement, thank you.
Okay, you got some prepared remarks there? You can...
Well, I just appreciate, once again, the support of the city for, you know, in this whole project, and, uh, three years ago, when I first spoke with the Board of Supervisors about building an animal shelter, it really was just a dream, and it is so incredibly exciting that we've moved forward, uh, in such a productive and compassionate way. And so, um, this memorandum of agreement really does talk about how, uh, our volunteers who have spent thousands of hours raising money, raising awareness, raising support for our community and for the opportunities, um, that not only community involvement can bring, but also for the opportunities it, it provides for animals to get adopted, and for people who love animals to, um, be able to adopt and be able to, uh, have resources made available. This agreement really encompasses all of that, and so, um, I, I hope that you're given permission to sign. Um, Cassie is by no means finished raising money after this $200,000. We, um, will continue to move forward, writing grants, uh, doing our fundraising. We have, um, a Brick Paver, um, fundraiser now that we are going to, um, kind of launch at the end of June, and we are, we're here, and we're here to lend support any way we can, and we just appreciate your openness to community activism, so thank you.
You guys are a very good activist organization. Raise a lot of money, serving a great purpose, so... Board questions? Anybody?
I'm making the motion.
All right, hang on. Public input, anybody? Motion's in order.
I make a motion to authorize the Mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement between Carson City, a consolidated municipality, and Friends of Carson Animal Support Initiative, Cassie, relating to the provision of funds and fundraising for an animal services facility.
Motion, second, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, carried unanimously. Okay. We will take up Item 34A, that's the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Development Agreement. This is on first reading.
Can we do, uh, Capitol?
Hang on, guys. I, I...
Just a change.
I, well, here's my intent. I mean, I know we got stuff going on here, but I've also got to run an agenda, and it's getting long, so it's my intent to get through as much as we can here before four, take a break just before four o'clock, so I can give the Board members some time. Four o'clock, take up the library appointments, and then when they're done, I'm going to go back to the, to the, uh, budgets and redevelopment, then we'll close out. Okay? That's where we're going to go.
Well, excuse me, I thought we had delayed this item, but I stepped out for a minute. Again, for the record, Roger Mullen, Parks and Recreation Director, and what we have, I, Mayor, I, excuse me again, but have you already read the subject title? Has that been read yet?
I haven't, but, uh...
I, I can read that if you'd like.
You got to read it into the record, I mean, otherwise...
You bet.
That's our, Adriana's going to shoot me, so read it into the record.
Okay, subject, the subject title, "For Possible Action Introduced on the First Reading, A Bill in Ordinance Approving the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Development Agreement for the Planned Schultz Ranch Development." And this one is somewhat of a housekeeping, um, item today. Um, back on April 16th, 2015, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they approved, you approved, the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District petition, which also included the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Development Agreement. However, um, according to, uh, Carson City Municipal Code Title 17.08, all the development agreements must be approved by ordinance. So we're bringing that portion back to using the ordinance form in your agenda, and, uh, we're bringing it back for your approval.
Board comments or questions? Public comment? Anybody? Motion's in order.
I move to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 106, an ordinance approving the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Development Agreement for the Planned Schultz Ranch Development.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, a couple seconds, by...
Thank you very much.
Okay, now let's take up Kurt Meyer.
My name's Kurt Meyer. I work for the Carson City Parks Department over at the swimming pool.
Hello, neighbor.
What's that?
I said hello, neighbor.
Hello, neighbor. Hey, so ultimately, do you want me to read the subject? Okay. Subject into the, "To Approve a Recommendation from Staff and the Parks and Recreation Commission for Free Use of the Carson Aquatic Facility for Carson City Resident Veterans with 100% Service-Connected Disability." The summary is simply, James Glasser got in touch with me after moving to Carson City. He is a veteran with a hundred, service-connected disability at 100%, and he came from Douglas County, and the Douglas County Aquatic Facility had this in place, and he said, "Why don't you?" And I said, "I don't know, let's work on it." So here we are, and we want that to happen. It was brought, yeah, it was brought, as you can see in the, in the report, it was brought to the Park and Rec Commission, and they approved it unanimously, so.
Okay, just looking at what, what the proposed action's going to be here. All right. Got anything more? Sir, you want to add anything?
Hi, I'm James Glasser, just moved here to Carson a couple months ago from Douglas County. I just want to say thank you for letting me have this time. The financial burden, you know, for having to use the, well, not having to use, but wanting to use the therapy pool, you know, for, for those of us, it's, it's, it's the only way that we can get a workout nowadays, you know, for all of us that have the injuries, you know. The water, the water working and aerobics inside of the water facility is therapeutic and keeps us from getting so large.
Well, I think on behalf of all of us up here at the board, we thank you for your service, and we're going to do this, so.
Thank you.
But who do you have with you there?
This is Jack. He's my PTSD service dog.
Okay. Jack, is that right?
Yep.
Hey, Jack, can you hear me? There he goes. All right. All right.
Start attention. Start attention.
Yeah, I did, man. Wish that happened more often. All right. Public comments? Motion's in order. Who wants to, Supervisor Abad, go.
I move to approve a recommendation from staff and the Parks and Recreation Commission for free use of the Carson Aquatic Facility for Carson City Resident Veterans with 100% service-connected disabilities.
Motion by Supervisor Abad, and seconds by everybody on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. And while you're there, I should mention, I think I mentioned earlier, that the first Vietnam Veterans Honor Flight to Washington DC is going to be taking off June nineteenth and coming back June twenty-first, so. And I'm told, you know, I don't know if I'm telling stories out of school, that'll be the first of many, so, okay? All right. Thanks. All right, Jeff, okay. Thanks, Jack. All right. Let's take up Cultural Commission Report thirty-five.
I think everybody left.
Did they leave?
Yeah, they thought you scrubbed it.
Well, I didn't know if I was going to scrub it or not, because they told me the people here.
They all left.
Okay. All right. All right, we're going to postpone thirty-five as well. Okay, let's take up thirty-six A.
No, we skipped that.
Ben, how you doing?
Good afternoon.
You're looking good.
Is that working?
Why don't you tell, why don't you take us through what you're doing on both these items, and then we'll take them up, sit them out, and vote. So just tell us what's going on.
Thank you. Ben Bianchi, Juvenile Services Chief. What I'm asking for support on today is raising the contracted daily amount for jurisdictions that hold juveniles in our detention center from one, $125 a day to $350 a day. And it sounds like a significant jump, which it is, but I took a look at the actual cost of what it costs to run a juvenile hall. We're a sixteen-bed facility, and if we were at capacity three hundred and sixty-five days a year, the actual cost would be $254 a day. So we've been charging 125 the last two to three years, so what that's telling me is Carson City subsidizing these jurisdictions that don't have a detention facility. Really, the only county that doesn't have their own facility or contract with other, a different facility is Story County. And I was before their commissioners Tuesday, and made them aware of this change in the interlocal agreement, and they voted on it, and they passed it. So we did do the front-end work there and have the support of Story County. The other counties that use us as an overflow facility is Lyon County. I've been in contact with their chief, and they're aware that I'm here today to make the recommendations of raising those costs. Mineral County uses this a little bit. Nye County used to use this a lot, but they have since went to Clark County. So the amount of revenue it will generate, it will increase, but it all depends on the number of beds used by these people. So I'd, I'd ask the board to support in raising that. It's fair. And the reason we went to three fifty instead of two fifty, like I said, it's a, it's a coed facility, and the numbers are transient. You never know. This morning, I think we had eleven kids in custody. Tomorrow, it could be fourteen. And in a sixteen-bed facility, it's two wings. It only takes one girl to make it a thirteen-bed facility, and we staff it for sixteen because of ratio to staff mandates. Once you go over eight, you have to have that extra staff there. So we, in the waking hours, we generally have at least three people on staff, so it's an expensive endeavor. To go along with that, we're requesting a 20% juvenile programming assessment fee to generate some revenue for front-end programming. We, we have a wonderful staff, and we do a lot of really good things with kids, and we really promote, the philosophy of the department is to promote self-change. I mean, kids are identified, kids and family through law enforcement. Our officers and detention staff work on building relationships and trust and, and developing change of behavior through, through planting seeds and promoting self-change by building life skills, planting seeds of life skills, such as leadership, integrity, empathy. And, and those things are best built when they're done through activities. We have, we're, we currently have nine substance abuse groups every week in the juvenile as front-end programming. Along with that, we do four interactive forward-thinking change groups. And we're also looking to roll out a, a summer, we're, we're calling it a Leadership Resiliency Wilderness Program, where we've, we've, right now, we've selected fifteen youth, and we're going through the court process, where it's really going to be a day program, where we're, we're hoping to purchase bikes, backpacks, and, and real heavy on the, the physical activity of it while doing programming. And we're going to plant those seeds through that interaction, where we're building trust and building relationships, and hopefully moving them forward in a positive direction. I mean, ultimately, the goal is to change the way they think and feel, and ultimately change their behavior. And I'm real excited about the things we're doing, and, and, you know, the numbers speak for themselves right now this year. If, if, you know, with your support in passing this, if this was done a year ago, it put approximately $20,000 in our coffers. And the last thing I want to mention that's crucial, and I, we're not the only jurisdiction that's weak in it, is, is the mental health component. I mean, we're heavy on drug and alcohol, but I think the, the, the experts and the people that really have, have drilled this down realize that these juveniles that are getting identified with substance abuse problems at age thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, they have underlying mental health issues that went unrecognized, you know, at five, six, seven, eight, and they get identified by the juvenile justice system, and we're hitting them with drug and alcohol treatment when we need to take a better approach at it and have a co-occurring type of approach in dealing with their, their needs. And, and lastly, this money also will be used for, for developing programming within the detention center. We get a lot, the kids that are there for the longest period of times are generally kids with mental health issues while we're trying to access programs and going through the court systems. And we currently have a therapist that does come in, that does some maintenance to try to help them deal with being in a detention center, the unknowns of what's taking place. So it's, it's really treating the individual and giving them support and services and helping them through a difficult time.
Well, Ben, I think, I speak for all of us up here. You do a lot with not a whole lot of money, and it's terribly important service that you provide to our community, because, you know, those lives that you save at your level save lives many times over as they grow up, so. All right. Public, want to comment on this one? Anybody?
Thank you.
All right. Motion's in order.
Mayor, if you're okay with this, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the interlocal contract and increasing the detention fees prior to us increasing the adminis, the assessment fee.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, go.
I move to approve the interlocal contract for temporary housing of juveniles at Murphy-Bernardini Juvenile Detention Center between Carson City and other local counties and government agencies that enter into such contract, increasing the detention fees for the center from $125 to $350 per day per juvenile.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, let's take up...
I move to approve a 20% juvenile programming assessment fee on revenue collected through the interlocal contract for temporary housing of juveniles at Murphy-Bernardini Juvenile Detention Center to be used by the Carson City Juvenile Detention Services to develop and implement programming and services for detained youth, non-detained youth, and families to reduce juvenile delinquent behavior.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, board, I think we can take a break until four o'clock and do the library, and then when we're done with the library appointments, we'll come back, pick up the CIP and redevelopment, and one other budget item? Which one am I missing? That's all I've got left?
Yeah, we, we have, the other items we have pushed to, to a following meeting.
All right. All right. Let's take a break, then, get a, all right. We're in recess until about four o'clock. four o'clock.
We do need to hear everybody's voice before and after and on the side.
Want to add anything?
Uh, no.
All right. Well, thanks Valerie. Thanks for-
Thank you.
Thanks Valerie. Thanks for applying. You could sit and wait. Sit and wait is wrong. Sit and listen to the rest of the interviews as we go. So please join us if you want.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna bring Dixie in next.
Hi Dixie. How you doing this afternoon? That's where you're- you're just fine. Just fine. So Dixie, I don't know if you've been through this drill before.
Hi.
Huh? Hi. Good. Well, we're gonna- we each ask all the same questions and uh, and uh, and then, so nobody gets an unfair advantage. So, you know, I usually start off and I ask, one, I'd like you to, you know, tell us why you want to be on the library board. And two, my other question is, what do you think the role of libraries are in a modern community?
Three questions. Pushed to speak.
Yeah, push to talk or whatever.
So-
Sure, one question. Don't worry about it.
And let go?
Anytime that red light's on, you're on. Okay.
Well, I have a real commitment to the common good. And when I went through the library's mission statement, that's the phrase that really struck me. And I actually think the common good is under assault in our country. We're so focused on individualism. The libraries are a great place for everyone to have access, but also everyone to have a chance to gain opportunity, to gain education in this case, or gain access. I bring some background that I just wanted to share. I've worked in community development in various ways for about forty years. And part of that has included strategic planning. A part of it has been with public, private, volunteer sector coalitions. Part of it has been consultant to businesses. Part of it has been totally within a volunteer organization context. And I think that what I, what I bring from that is an ability to bring an objective voice. I've had experience with various boards. And I've noticed that, that volunteer organizations work differently than other organizations. You can't have a direct chain of command and have everybody do it. So I think that's one of the skills that I bring is how do you, how do you constantly keep focused on motivation? Which means being in touch with what people actually want and what people actually need. The library itself, in nineteen, probably eighty-nine, when I was on, in the Mendocino County area, I was part of a group, actually, I was the founding president of the Coast Community Library. This started out of nothing, and it was people who wanted to have a library in their area, up and down from Jenner to, well, up and down the coast, in the Mendocino Coast area. And really, really created, just simply out of their enthusiasm, a library for the community. It did then later win the national award for volunteer library in the country, which they were quite thrilled about. But what I really saw was people coming forth with a need and with a vision. And then together we worked through what were the blocks and how would we achieve that imagined future. So that's why, really, what I, what I bring and why I want to be a part of this library. I think the rest of it I said in my-
Application.
Yeah, my application.
Jim, you wanna go next?
The second question I haven't done yet, you know. Okay. Or were those both-
No.
Your questions?
The role of a library in the modern community?
Yeah, the ro- well, common good. That's probably it. And in this case, I think we've gone from an imagined future from the library that they had in their five-year plan that ended in thirteen. And then they had to readjust to how would they fulfill that in the future. And so one of the ways they're doing that is with the public-private partnerships.
My question is, do you have a library card?
Oh, of course I have a library card. My, and my son was the first one to get that in the little library I mentioned. But every time I've been anywhere, I've gotten a library card.
Great.
Now, I do have, well, we don't have fines anymore, but I'm not the best at getting them back on time.
Neither was I.
Yeah. It's an important thing.
When the library board has their meetings and they have an agenda, they only allow citizens to talk before the agenda is discussed or after all agenda items have been voted on and are done with discussion. I'm looking for a candidate to sit on the library board who would allow citizens to speak before the agenda, during the agenda. What is your preference?
Well, that's an interesting question. You know, we, in this country, we tend to go with Robert's Rules of Order, which deadens creativity, frankly. So what you're asking about is a different meeting format that actually includes participation. So I would at least see times when, in that meeting format, you would actually do a workshop with who was gathered there. I think you'd announce what the topic was. Today, we're going to be focused on the M- T1, you know, for instance. And so that people who came would know that, and you'd have that, you'd have the workshop and people included who were there as ordinary citizens. But I think you'd let people know ahead of time about it. And I do think it's a difference between the way we structure meetings.
Good afternoon. Thank you for applying. We really appreciate it. Do you have a library project that you would like to personally work on?
Well, I'm already working on the film team. This goes along with the library book read, and we just finished it this year. And with it, part of the sponsorship of the library has been the International Film Festival. They've been the non-for-profit that has been the, when we did grants this last year. I don't know how we're going into the future. And that's been a very fruitful partnership, I think. There were seven hundred people this last year who participated in that three-day event. It's a way, I mean, I'm even looking toward the future, how are ways that, I know a few years ago, the, the book that was chosen was one that had the auditorium filled with people. The author was here and it was filled. This year, not that, for the book itself and the discussion with the author, it wasn't that great a turnout. It was a smaller amount of turnout. Again, I think you have to keep your pulse on what's happening in the community and in the nation. You know, what are people really intrigued with and where do they want to be involved? And that's part of, that's part of the visioning role, and I think it's around the common good. Because if you get more people thinking together, you have a chance for good dialogue.
Hi Dixie.
Hi.
Can you give me your proposal on using new technology in the library?
Great. Well, I've, I've been interviewing some people now. It's not a, it's not like Survey Monkey, and it's not been a scientific survey. It's just been one or two from here and there. I talked with a teacher from the high school. I talked with a counselor from the high school. I've talked with someone on the foundation board. I've talked with someone in the community. And just asked them, well, what do you think about what's happening with the library right now? What I noticed was, from the high school, they were very intrigued with the use of promoting technology. And part of it was, the library has expanded hours. They can stay open in the evening. The high school doesn't have to staff it. So that's a great advantage. There was some question of why the students who were required to take the technology course and that people were supportive of that, but why it included all of the technology. So they were doing the presentations at the, that ended up the ones at the Galaxy Theater. So, so I'm very much in favor of it. My, my son's a computer game programmer. And I know that his, he learned a lot through the WNC Carson High partnership with classes that are held onsite at the high school. So I'm very much a proponent of using all the methods available to us. I do think we have to, and, and then again, with the job creations. What a great way to listen for where the community really is in need. Well, it's around people being, not just employed, but employers having access to training. So I'm very much a proponent of that. Sometimes I wonder about if, if you have the people who created the proposal, and in this instance, I'm thinking not just, did we change directors, you know, a year and a half ago or however long, but now the deputy director who interim, and deputy director who was instrumental in this technology proposal, shall we say, elements of it, is now leaving. I think there might be a vacuum of leadership, not in terms of the skill of technology, but in terms of this, the whole package. And in organizations, I've seen that that's a, that's a dicey transition year or so. And so, that's kind of an answer to your question. I'm very much in favor of it. But how's it really effective, I guess is the question. You have to have people who are promoting it in the community or who are listening as well to make sure that everyone's behind it.
Hi Dixie. I've been to the library. You spoke of Mendocino, and it is wonderful.
Oh, well, actually, this was Point Arena, so.
I know.
Oh, you do know?
Yes, I do know.
Hey, way to go.
The partnership with the library, Carson City School District, and the manufacturing sector with the MT1 program-
Right.
Has made some great strides. How would you, as a board member, advise your library director about growing these relationships and programs? And this is a two-part question, so. That's the first part.
Okay. Well, I read all the other applications of the people who are applying for this position. And I think first what I'd do is I'd make sure that there are gonna be five who are not appointed. And I'd make sure that they are on board as active supporters, because they all bring different skills. And I think in this particular program, that's very necessary. Again, just to repeat myself, you need people who can speak with the community and can connect with the community. You need people who do know the manufacturing sector. You need people who are grant writers. I mean, just to name a few, you know, across the board. Specifically, I think I'd look at the work that's already been done and, and do, be very proactive about an evaluation of what's been working in it and what doesn't work. And, and in, in my past experience, it's very important, they used to call these skunk works, to celebrate failures. In skunk works, you don't put a whole lot of money into research and development. People get invested, and then you can't get the program to stop, even if it's not working. That what you do is look at, you just quite continually do evaluations and make it part of the culture where we celebrate if that approach didn't work. Let's adapt it a bit. And, and it's okay. We tried something. We learned from that. And let's make something that's more successful and that is on target, so.
And, how do you think ongoing funding should be accomplished for this program?
Ongoing funding for this particular program?
After that, we're gonna ask you how to fund the whole budget.
Well, okay, I'm just gonna go back. This is what I really think about fundraising, even though that's not really the question, but it gives me a forum to tell it. I think what really works about fundraising is people being motivated. And I don't just mean the fundraisers being motivated. And I use that example from not-for-profit organizations. It, it doesn't work to keep hammering on something, but what works is if your vision is strong enough, people wanna be a part of it. They want a piece of that action. And so I guess that's really my approach. In this one in particular, though, you're asking, I'm not sure. I don't know when this particular funding runs out. I don't know if they've said that it cannot be renewed. I don't have those details. So I'm not sure yet. And I'd make sure that I got in touch with people who do know that.
Anything you want to add, Dixie?
Well, it took, I didn't apply until the very last day for this position. And the reason I drug my feet, I find, I kept digging to find out why. And I realized it's because I was heartbroken, because the former idea of the full completion of the library's plan didn't come to fruition. And then I realized, well, everybody on that board of trustees is in the same position. So that's what released me to be able to go ahead and apply. And I think that what's happening, as I read through Tammy's report, was that creative ways have been found to work with elements. Well, that wasn't the way to go. That one didn't happen. Let's see how some other pieces could happen. And, and I guess I want to be a part of that. And I will be in whatever way, so.
Very good. Okay. Thanks Dixie. You're welcome to hang around and listen if you want. 'Cause we're gonna make a decision here, but you're welcome to sit and listen.
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay. Say hello to Rob, okay?
We're gonna have Jeremy come in now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'm gonna go out in the hallway. I'll get John up on the phone, and we'll do a telephone interview with him.
So what we're gonna do next, John Liverotti?
No. My apologies for confusing. Jeremy will come in now.
Okay.
I'm gonna go out in the hallway and get John on the phone, and then we'll do a telephonic interview with John. And that'll conclude.
Hi Jeremy, how you doing?
Doing very well, thank you.
We asked all the same questions of all the applicants, and, and so nobody gets an unfair advantage. We want to thank you for applying.
Thank you very much.
Regardless of how it comes out, we think it's great that you've applied and want to see your community do better.
Absolutely.
So I usually ask first, just to get it warmed up, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to do this. And then my question to you is, what do you believe the role of libraries are in a modern, in a modern community?
Okay. Well, as you said, my name is Jeremy Hayes. I moved up to the, to this area about two and a half years ago. Came up to work for the state of Nevada as an economist in the Department of Employment, Training and Rehabilitation. I, I was recently shown that the, the extent to which the library is working in workforce development and, you know, training programs and things like that, such as the MT1 certification and some of the children's programs. And that was, that was very new to me. I was under the impression that the role of the library was repository for knowledge. And I was very happily surprised that that wasn't the case, that, you know, there's a lot more going on at the library, and I hope that I can help with that.
Very good. Who wants to go? Lori? Go.
Hi Jeremy, thank you very much for applying for this position. We really appreciate it. Do you have a project, a library project you would personally like to work on?
I don't know that I would have, like, a pilot program that would, you know, come specifically from me. However, some of the youth programs that I'm familiar with, specifically getting some of the kids ready for 3D drafting and design, things like that, I would love to put my support behind something like that. Prior to working as an economist, I actually worked in AutoCAD as a commercial kitchen draftsman. And I think that the kind of exposure that that is giving to the kids would, you know, would have benefited me to a very great extent in that career. And I would like to, you know, help to harbor that going forward.
Hi Jeremy. Can you tell us your thoughts on using new technology to enhance the library?
I would absolutely be a hundred percent behind using new technology. That is what's driving everything in the economy today. And, yeah, I, I feel that that is, it's important that people have exposure to that via an outlet, such as the library, that it's public and things like that. So I think that that's very important to, to harbor that.
Hi Jeremy.
Hi.
The partnership with the library, the Carson City School District, and the manufacturing sector with the MT1 program has made great strides. How would you, as a board member, advise your library director about growing these relationships and programs? That's the first part of the question.
Okay. So first and foremost, I, I'm an ex-officio member of the Manufacturing Sector Council through the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And I'm sure that they, you know, getting the Carson City Library and that partnership together with that sector council would help to grow that immensely.
The harder question.
Okay.
How do you think ongoing funding should be accomplished? To keep the programs like that going?
Again, I think that funding, funding opportunities are definitely there with GOED, with the Governor's Office of Economic Development. They, I feel that they could be petitioned for greater support. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Do you have a library card?
I actually haven't had one for a few years. It didn't make the move up with me.
Okay. My question is, the library board, when they meet and they have a discussion over their agenda item, citizens are only allowed to talk prior to the agenda or after all agenda items have been discussed and voted on. What is your position on this?
Those are meeting laws that I'm pretty well familiar with, the public comment sessions before and after. It makes sense to me that items on the agenda should be discussed by the board and that any concerns be raised prior or post.
Would you opt for discussion? This board allows individual citizens to talk as each agenda item comes up. Would you be in favor of that?
I would think that, so they do that after each agenda item?
Prior to.
Or prior to?
During, during the agenda item itself. This board allows citizens to talk at every agenda item. I could remember to turn my light on. It'd probably be helpful.
I could see where that would be helpful. I would think that if undertaken correctly, you know, using, say, this board as an example, I think that that would definitely be beneficial.
All right, now that I got you there. You work with Bill Anderson, right?
I do.
What, what do you think is happening? You know, I look at the employment, this is off-topic, so this not, hadn't done the library.
Okay.
But I mean, you're, you know, somebody asked me the other day, is the, is the population in Carson City increasing or decreasing? And I looked at your stats, and it showed, you know, the projection, the estimates are declining. I looked at the United States DOJ or DOL stats, and it showed us increasing. Is there a reason for that? Or do you know?
I don't work-
I don't catch you off-guard, but, you know.
I don't work too terribly closely with the population. I'm generally a labor economist, so looking at the employment side, specifically industrial employment. However, we have seen a relatively steady decline or stagnation at the very most positive employment in Carson City. That's all I could think of that would account for that, but like I said, I, I'm not an, not an expert as to the demography.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good answer. Thanks Jeremy. Sorry to put you out of spot there, but-
No problem at all.
Mr. Anderson is quite good at answering, he's quite good at, you know, being responsive to us when we have these questions, and so are you, so.
I do my best to-
You're welcome to stick around, Jeremy, and listen. If not, you don't have to, but you're welcome to stick around, and we, again, thank you for applying.
Thank you very much.
All right. Hi John.
Hi Bob.
How you doing? Where are you?
Um, just outside of Philadelphia, New Jersey.
Okay. Well, I think you know the drill. One, we all want to thank you for applying, John, and let us, I mean, we're all gonna ask the same questions here, but my question to get it started off, John, is this, is, one, you know, why do you want to get involved in, in the library board? And two, what do you see as the role of libraries in modern communities?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to do this by phone. I realize it's not the norm. The reason I want to do this is, I've been retired for five years, and I've slowly decided that I needed to give back to my community. And I've been doing different things. And I've decided that I've been a rather, an abuser of the library. Somebody who's been using them and never really doing something for them. So I wanted to do something for them and get my talents could be put to good use.
Excuse me. Thanks, 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 John. All right, let's see, where are we now? Brad, go.
Hi John, this is Brad Bonkowski.
Good evening, Brad.
Hi. My question for you is, what are your thoughts or proposals for using new technology to enhance the library?
I've been, I think that we need to do that as much as possible. I'm kind of old-fashioned. I mean, I use audiobooks, e-books. But I'm one of the guys that likes to have something in my hands and not a, and not a Kindle. I like the hard copy. But our kids, they like new stuff. They like using their smartphones. They like using the iPads. They like using the computers. And there's enough books in the libraries for us all folks. I think the new technology is gonna be what the new kids need. And so I'm all for it. Takes me a little longer to get accustomed to it, and maybe a bigger hammer to get it through my thick skull, but I'm for the new technology.
John, I have a follow-up question for you as well. Are you currently a member of the Library Foundation?
I am. I, I just came on about two months ago.
So if we were to appoint you to the Board of Trustees today, would you, maybe this is a question for the DA, would you need to resign that position on the foundation?
If I had to, I would. I don't think it's a compromising situation, but I would if that was necessary.
And I would have, this is Adriana Frelick, I would have to look at the organization of the foundation and the trustees, because-
We currently have a foundation member on our board.
You do?
We do.
Okay. So I would say if that hasn't been a conflict before, then it would remain not a conflict unless something else exists out there that I don't know about.
Hi John, this is Karen.
Hi.
Hi. The partnership with the library and the Carson City School District and the manufacturing sector with the MT1 program has made great strides. How would you, as a board member, advise your library director about growing these relationships and programs? This is a two-part question.
Well, I think the most important thing to do is to get out and network with both the school, community college and the business industry group of Carson City and Northern By doing that, you'll, you get a better understanding of what the needs are and how to tailor your approach to future years for the library. But networking is really key. You have to know your players, you need to know what they need, get the plan and that's, you know, key in going forward in the future.
Okay. And secondly, how do you think ongoing funding should be accomplished to keep this program going?
For the library itself?
Yes. For this MT1 program.
Oh, well, for that program, I see a lot of the funding probably should be from the people who are going to benefit most from it. And to me, that's from the business community. I see that the schools and the community college, I think they should have some commitment to this as well because their students are, will be benefiting. But I think the majority of it come from the business community.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon John. Do you have a library card?
I do.
Good.
I have a Library of Congress card as well.
John, while serving on the library board, when they have their agenda, they allow citizens to speak before an agenda item or after the agenda item has been discussed and voted on. I'm looking for a candidate that would allow citizens to have a voice during or during and before or after the agenda item is presented. What is your position on this?
Well, I have run meetings through the state when I worked for the Division of Healthcare Finance and Policy and since you cannot, it's very difficult to take action on items as they come up or discuss. I think it's best if information is either given before or after. I don't, I would agree with the way the open meeting law is stated where you can have the comments before or after, but I think during is disruptive to the flow of the meeting. Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi John.
Hi, this is-
This is Lori Bagwell.
Hi Lori.
Do you have a library project you would like to personally work on?
No, I'm open. I would, I wouldn't try and help with anything. Whenever the greatest need is that the library thinks, I would put my efforts toward.
Hey John, this is the mayor.
Yes.
We're done with questions. You want to add anything? Now that you're back there in Philadelphia.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, on my trip here, I've seen three libraries on this trip. I've seen, well, I went to the Library of Congress again and I've seen a library in Rockville, Maryland and I saw a private library at the Biltmore State. Had 23,000 books in it. I was kind of stunned by that number. But I always thought that, you know, libraries were the places where we go to learn and we do things to better ourselves and the library is there to help people of all ages learn different things or how to deal along with people and how to better themselves. And so, I want to, I want to see if I can help our community do more with the library that we've got. And that's why I put my name in for consideration. And I thank you for allowing me to do it over the phone and even though we had a mix-up in my phone number, I'm happy that we were able to resolve that.
Very good, very good. Thanks John.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your trip. All right.
Thanks a lot. Thanks everybody.
Bye John. The other one?
What about Ted?
Yeah, he was not here earlier, so I don't-
Let's see. Why don't we just go start there here? I'll start whatever you want and then see if we can hit the top person and go or talk. So, I'll just start and say, you know, after listening to all of them, they're all well-qualified. To me, the, I'd put at the top of the list John Liverotti, that's where I am.
According to my scoring system, John's also at the top.
According to my scoring system, same.
Scoring to mine, it's Jeremy.
I'm going to say Jeremy also because I thought he was going to bring some connections to the library board that we don't currently have and I think we're actually missing out on an opportunity to connect if technology is really where we want to go. And that's where the library seems to be going and I think you're missing out potentially on a talent to do all that, so Jeremy, it's mine too.
Mm-hmm.
Chair will entertain a motion to appoint John Liverotti to the Board of Trustees.
I move to appoint John Liverotti to fill an unexpired term that will end June 2018 for the Library Board of Trustees.
There's a motion, a second on the motion. Discussion, hearing, none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Jeremy, thank you for applying and thanks, say hello to everybody over there at Dieter. Do good work. And thanks to all the applicants for applying to make Carson City a better place to work, live and play. All right. Thanks Jeremy. All right. Let's take up, go back to the CIP issues.
Yeah, that would be item 21 Bravo.
21 Bravo and then we'll roll in the redevelopment.
And then we'll do the redevelopment.
Are we ready?
I don't know about you, but-
Derek much?
Maybe we, you want to take a break?
No, I'm good. I'm sorry. So, what we, we talked a lot about capital already. This is, this is kind of a summary page on the total amount of capital that we project that we're going to have available in 2016. So, the 2000, the Fund 2010 capital is the five cent property tax amount that's not pledged for debt, so we estimate there's going to be 389,000. We have a separate, the extraordinary maintenance fund. We only have 95,000 showing up because we need to have 5,000 in fund balance, so, you know, going forward, we'll be able to appropriate the whole 100. The estimated debt service savings we have this year is 75,000 and then the general fund transfer is 700. So, we're estimating 1,259,000. The actual recommendation, we're recommending that we keep a little over 225,000 for break-fix and then we're recommending the list, 1,033,343. So, you have in your packet the list that's probably not, let me see if I can get it. So, this is, this is the page one of the list that IFC recommends that gets funded. So, that's, that's the 1,033,343.
Nick, while you're doing that, can you explain to us the difference between the extraordinary maintenance fund and the break-fix reserve?
Well, I think on the extraordinary, in the extraordinary maintenance fund, we were planning on using, basically using probably what, some of the multi-year roof replacement amount. I mean, there's 95,000 and I think it's, you know, by statute, it has to be used for certain things. So, we were going to, we were going to use, you know, put 95,000 of the multi-year roof replacement in there. And then the break-fix would be, you know, all kinds of other things that could happen. I mean, you know, this year, for example, we have, you know, the issue at the jail, right? I mean, so, it basically-
That's fine, thank you.
More technology, just move that out a little bit.
Question as well, Nick. Nick, do you know the, you have two items on the approve list. That's carpet replacement, city facilities carpet replacement, juvenile probation carpet replacement. I guess my question is, how bad is it? And I look at the Carson Aquatic Facility, outdoor tile replacement and if we wait too long, how bad is that problem going to be? So, I'm just kind of wondering the priority there.
Yeah.
I know for a fact, Darren Schultz, Public Works for the record, I know for a fact that some of that carpet has holes in it, through it. So, it's, it's pretty bad. I cannot speak for the aquatic tile.
We were trying to find money from question 18 to fix that, to fix that tile, but we just couldn't, we couldn't find it.
The tile is at the outdoor pool and it's getting bad. We're concerned that people are going to cut their feet or hands on it. Kurt Meyer is constantly trying to patch it and replace it and it does need to be replaced at some time.
I mean, I mean, what I could offer to you is that we might have some extra money in fiscal 15 that we can carry over, you know, to next fiscal year and, you know, if you wanted to put that, you know, as a priority, so that, I mean, I don't know if you know, there's probably, probably a couple hundred thousand maybe in 210 right now, you don't know. You have any idea? You're looking at me like I'm a crazy man.
I'm just concerned about-
There's a reason for that.
And that's right.
We also still have money in contingency, right? There's still money in contingency.
We do, we do have some money in contingency that we could, that we could appropriate as well, that's correct.
I'm just concerned about the liability of allowing that to-
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
There's about 200,000 so far that we have, so we, we have to get to the end of June and then that amount will carry forward. So, so that, I mean, we could, we could put that on the priority list, you know.
I would prefer that.
Okay. I mean, actually, what we probably could do is, is take, you know, whatever we have left and, you know, and take those items that didn't quite make the cut and bring them, bring them forward if we have money left from this year carrying forward. I think, I think that would be fine. That'd be a good idea, actually. Because most of those items are, are necessary, you know, maintenance items.
Do you need a motion to that effect or could you just do it the way we've got it?
Well, I think what will end up happening is that we'll bring a budget augmentation back next year, once we, once we know what the dollars are and then, and then we'll bring it forward.
Okay.
Nick, I've got a couple of questions, so bear with me if you will. The digital video recorder for the sheriff, where's that for? Is that in the cell, in the jail?
I believe it is in the jail, but I think he could probably, it is in the jail. Yeah. It is in the jail.
That's what I thought, okay. And defibrillators?
Defibrillators?
Yeah, hard to say that. I thought we bought some of those last year.
Well, we did. I think this is the last one. I think, I think they bought six or seven and-
Correct.
And I think they needed one more, so that's-
127,000 for one?
No, it's 30,000. You're looking at the running total.
I'm sorry, excuse me. You're right, you're right. 30,000, okay. Wrong column, I apologize. And the multi-year roof replacement, for 185,000?
Right.
Where's that?
That's a, that's a variety of city-owned buildings that we, that we need to do roof issues with and I, I'm not exactly sure, are you?
I don't remember which ones.
Yeah, I know, I know Bob told me that the health building is in really bad shape and there's, I mean, he's, he's got a list that I have back in my office of-
Right. No problem. But I was kind of alluding to what we talked earlier, X amount of dollars in that other fund goes for strictly those buildings. That's not set up within each department would have a building fund?
No.
No?
Only the enterprise funds.
Only the enterprise fund has that.
It's water, sewer.
Generally speaking, a roof, anywhere in the city would come out a general fund, correct?
Well, it would be-
As this one.
Right. If it's, if it's not funded through the water department, like where Darren actually resides is funded by the water department, so.
Or in sewer.
Or in sewer, right. So, all the general government buildings, so this building, you know, the sheriff, the health building, they're all general government buildings.
Okay. And the IP network, infrastructure, 100,000, where's that?
Right.
John Wilkinson, IT Director. In 2006, the city bought a combined network and telephone system from Cisco and this, this equipment is starting to go out, past its life cycle to where Cisco will not support it anymore. That means if it breaks, we're on our own. If it's got a software bug, we're on our own. So, we're replacing it. We've got about 200,000 worth of equipment to replace, so this is, this is not all of it. We'll, we'll be back next year for, for, for the rest of it, to finish it out. We, we replaced the phone system servers this year. This is going to be switches and routers in this 100,000. We do get some help independent of this from Public Works, but that can only cover maybe, maybe 20% of our problem. So, this is switches and routers. We've got about 50 switches, somewhere between, we're trying to cut the number down on, on all of these devices, somewhere between three and seven routers and some of the routers, the big ones run 10,000. The switches, the, the top-end switches run about 6,000 or 7,000 each. So, that's what, that's what this is for.
Can I ask a question that's related to your question, Jim?
Sure.
John, on the IT, on the part of the, part of the list that wasn't funded, there's library telephones. And in a conversation with Siena and their 30,000, the library board is willing to pay half of that. Would that make any difference in trying to get some of that technology onboard in, in terms of your, what you're doing now?
We've got, right now with this network upgrade, we've got, it's really the biggest problem we're facing, so it, and we've got two budget cycles to get it done and really about 16 months to get it done. So, but, well, these, these are your priorities, though. If, if, if that's where you wanted to prioritize it, well, that's, that's where the money will go. That's not where I would prioritize it, though.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Other questions?
Still there. Got to ask the sheriff about vehicles.
Did you bring your driver's license?
I rode with him. He's really not that good of a driver either. Couldn't resist. Sheriff, I noticed on, on the first page, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight vehicles on the first section, but in the bottom section, you got just as many vehicles that you're requesting. So, I don't, I understand the need for it, but how come the other vehicles made the bottom of the list?
That question would probably be better addressed by Mr. Morano. It was a matter of prioritizing the entire list, if you will. It was a matter of prioritizing the entire list, if you will.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, Supervisor Shirk, we had all the department directors submit their capital projects. We then collectively prioritize them. Obviously, sheriff patrol vehicles are a high priority. I think we probably have about, as an effective compromise, as we have, keeping in mind how much money we thought would be available. We did try to front-end load a number of them. You can see he still has a big requirement for additional patrol vehicles. There's no easy way, when you have more demand than you have funding authority. So I, I, I think, given what we had available, this is a good prioritization. I think the, matter of fact, I know the department directors felt like it was a fair process. And again, with what we have available, I think this is, this is about, this is about as good as we're gonna get right now. As additional revenues become available, we'd obviously like to continue to go down the list here.
And, and I appreciate that. That's pretty much how the process went. The difficult challenge with the vehicles is they are aging every year, and, and so when I refer to that hole getting bigger and deeper, I think our initial projection was in the $800,000 range of, of needs for the fleet management. I, I would offer you this much, and, and this is a vision statement, I've shared it with both Nick and Nick. Really, from a city perspective, to replace more than, more than eight in a, in a year, really sets us up for a problem down the road. Conversely, not replacing vehicles sequentially each year as we go along creates a bigger hole. And, and I've made the suggestion that, that we make some attempts to embed absolute purchases per year, and I, I've, I've shared it with both, that we make a minimum purchase of four, but never more than eight per year. In that, over the course of about an eight-year period, that process would get us completely out of the hole, and, and have a revolving fleet that, that would not break the city's back. We've done this with other items within our department, and I'm sure elsewhere in the city, where you are routinely replacing things and never creating this massive debt, where to date, it's sitting at about 800,000.
And Sheriff, I agree with you on that, and that's part of the, what we looked at the leasing program on fleet for, was to see if we could accomplish that. So I would be in complete agreement with you if we could replace eight a year, every year.
Thank you, Kenny.
Public comment? Board? Ready for a motion?
So, just briefly, Mayor, we, we do have the, the capital, the capital listing, and then the last three pages are just kind of the five-year capital plan, and, and we just wanted to submit that. We'll, we'll need to submit that to the state. We have to submit a five-year capital plan every, every year, so...
Okay.
Those are the proposals.
Other questions of staff? Ready for a motion? Motion Supervisor, who wants to do it? Supervisor Bonkowski, go.
I move to, where's my paperwork here?
Accept.
I don't, I don't have it here, probably. Somebody have it?
I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2015-16 through 2019-20 capital improvement program.
On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you, thanks, Nick. All right, now, that completes, where are we next? Redevelopment. Adriana, could I ask you and Nick, there's a board policy that we adopted a couple years on prioritization of spending, when there was additional monies. I don't think that applies, or I, but I just want both of you to take a look at that policy, and make sure that nothing we did here today contravenes that, or would make us wanna bring that back up.
Yeah, no, I have that policy.
Okay.
I think it's fine.
Okay, just double check.
I think, I think they're recommendations. I don't think they're, I don't think they're hard and fast laws. I think they're just recommendations of, of what we, what we would like to do, so that's my recollection.
Okay. Just please, take a look, that's all. All right. All right. We ready to go to redevelopment? All right. I'm gonna turn the gavel over to Chair of Redevelopment.
Start, call this redevelopment authority to order, and show that we have a quorum, and move on to item 24, public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 25, and Nick, will you take us through this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Nick Provodinti, Finance Director, I have Nancy Paulson here, she's the Deputy Finance Director, and I believe she actually gave this presentation to the Redevelopment Citizens Authority, the Redevelopment Citizens Committee on Monday, and I'm not sure, did they take action? They, they accepted it. Okay. So I, I just wanted to say that for the record. So, as, as we go through the redevelopment authority, we're estimating that they are going to be receiving about a million, a little under a million seven in property taxes. Salaries and benefits, again, we reduced the salary and benefits line item, basically removed Michael Slogo's salary from the redevelopment authority to the general fund, and I think we've reduced, reduced some of the other administrative folks out of there, so we reduced the actual salaries by 123,000. Principal interest payments, again, 278,400, and then the internal service charge is about 105. Incentives, we have 150,000 incentives in the redevelopment revolving fund, which will be used to pay the Southgate and the Carson Mall incentives. We have 165,999 available for undesignated capital. Now, it's my understanding, based on the, you know, on the, on the actions of the board, the actual board of supervisors, not the redevelopment authority at that time, they would like to take the Epic Ride money out of, out of the redevelopment fund instead of the general fund, so I believe any motion that, that you would make would probably have to note, you know, adding 30,000, and that would reduce the 165,999 available for undesigned.
And Nick, I would like to see if the other undesigned amount could be used for the four connector streets in the downtown corridor project between Carson Street and Curry Street, that really aren't part of that plan?
Sure.
So that there's some monies there that perhaps they can get match monies for, grants or whatever, so...
Absolutely. I mean, that would, again, be up to the authority.
Okay.
And we have 115,000 in special event slash incentives in the, in the revolving fund, which I think is consistent with prior years. We're, we're anticipating reimbursing the general fund, again, the 480,000 for the Michael Hole incentive. I believe that, we'll, we'll be making that incentive payment until 2020. So these, this is the, the redevelopment authority as a whole. Again, the money goes in to the, the tax fund, and then the tax fund takes it out, puts it to the administrative fund and to the revolving fund, and the revolving fund makes those expenditures. And I think this is probably a little bit easier. We've kind of broken it up between the, the downtown district and the South Carson District. It's, the 55-45 is based on assessed value, on, on, on the assessor's assessed value. So we have the money coming in, again, the, the money going out, and then we're anticipating, again, you know, fund balance of about 172,000. So I don't know. This is the five-year projection. So again, these projections are based on, I think, a three-year property tax increase, right? 3%? Is that, 3%? It's been a long day. And then, the actual debt service payments, you know, th- those are the actual payments that we'll have to make, and, you know, we've got some end dates on, on some of these projects as well. So I mean, the, the infrastructure, the undesigned amount, you know, assuming these projections come to fruition, is a pretty good amount of money, you know, in, in year two and three, you know, we're looking at, you know, almost 400,000 to 500,000 plus, so. With that, I could answer any questions?
Questions? Supervisor Shirk?
I'm almost done asking questions, because the meeting's almost over.
That's fine.
Debt service, the 278,000, is that for the brick?
It is not for the brick.
Okay, what is that for?
That was for a bond that we took out, probably back in 2001, I believe, and we, I think the original intent of that bond was to build a, was helped build with a parking garage, if, if, if I remember correctly, but that never happened, so I think they used it for redevelopment incentives, is what they ended up using it for back in the early 2000s.
I'm sorry, they use it for what?
They use it for incentives, for redevelopment incentives back in the early 2000s.
Then on the projections, on that page, who is Sal and Ben? Parks?
Salary and benefits.
Oh, salary and benefits?
Salary and benefits, right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For Parks, correct.
Service and supplies, we spend 225,000 on?
200, basically 219,000, so a lot of that, 105,000 of that is the general fund internal service charge, and then we have professional services. The rent is, that's the brick number, the 21,000. We had originally, we were originally taking 52,000, I believe, from, from the, from the redevelopment authority, and we ended up, because of the way that we rearranged everything at that building, we ended up taking it, we ended up cutting this amount to 21, and then we charged the building, the permit department more, just based on fairness. And then there's, just, just the other basic amounts are right there.
And then advertisement and marketing, what is, advertisement and marketing, what is that for?
Yeah, that would, Lee would, is Lee here? He was, he would have to be the one, I... I don't have the detail on that. I have the detail, but I don't know who it's for.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Good, good evening. Lee Plamel, Lee Plamel, Community Development Director. Adverti, yeah, what is the exact line item? It's ad, whatever it's called, it's advertising, but it, so there, there's events such as the Christmas tree lighting and the farmer's market that are sponsored by redevelopment and have line items, but in addition to those funds, we also do advertisements for those and publish, publish advertisements in the newspaper, have, which means we hire somebody to design those ads, and pay for them to go into sometimes a mag, magazine and newspaper. What's the line item, Nick? And, yeah, I think, I think if you look at it, there's, there's more in there when we, that we actually use, so we've reduced it. It was 14,000 last year, we reduced it to 9,000, but looking back, we don't, we usually don't spend that much on it.
Then on the Third Street project, the 218,000, that'll cover everything? We don't have any more costs projected for that in any fashion, I guess?
That's my understanding. That's, that's what it will take to finish the project.
And the infrastructure projects, define the word U-N-D-E-S, I'm not sure.
Undesignated.
Thank you.
So it's just basically, it's just basically a plug figure, so it'll, it'll be whatever you folks would like to do with that money, that's what we'll do with it.
Such as the bike?
Correct.
Okay. Is that bike, and I, I'm not sure, what is it called? What is it?
Epic Ride.
Epic Ride? Is that within either redevelopment district, or is it in the mountains?
Well, the start and finish is within the redevelopment district. Right, all, and all the, all the events.
There'll be something in the redevelopment area?
Yes.
Latchkeyed that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any more board discussion?
Just for clarification sakes, because I, this is my second round on this one, but I, Supervisor Bowd indicated that she would like to see the infrastructure, the undesigned dollars, go to the connector streets, and I certainly think that's probably a, a good idea with what we're doing, but I want to make sure that it is gonna go to the RAC committee for discussion and designs and, and all of that kind of stuff, because they may be thinking from the meeting Monday night, that they were gonna have some input if there was any other project that they thought might, might be useful to this. And so I want to go on record to say that this is just an idea that we're floating at this time, we're not, I, I'm not in favor of making a motion to put the undesigned balance to that project at this time. I think we need their input.
I would agree, Laurie, I think it does have to go back before them. I'm just throwing out ideas. Did they approve the 30,000 for the RAC? I mean, for the Epic Rides?
We didn't discuss Epic Ride at that level, because it was in the general fund budget, not in the redevelopment budget, and so their purview would not have, would have not have worked at that moment in time. And so maybe we can talk a little bit about the Epic Ride, though. Is there also component funding in the CVV? I mean, I think we need to understand the Epic Ride itself. What, what are we talking about?
Sure, the, the Epic Ride is, Epic Rides is an organization, they sponsor two other mountain bike races in the western US, one in Arizona and one in Colorado, I believe.
Pardon me, Grand Junction.
They have a good website, if you just Google Epic Rides, you'll see it. We project in the first year, we'll have a total of about 4,500 riders and non- rider attendees for the event. We expect it to grow each year. We're looking at, at least a five-year program with them. The amount that the CVV is involved, I had spoken with Supervisor Aboud, I thought it was a different number, it's at least 30,000. I, I thought it was 50,000 that they were committed to, I'm not certain about that. The 30,000 that we're talking here, that was in the general fund, and now you're considering for redevelopment, that will go for city-provided services. We're not gonna give them a check for 30,000, but in the MOU that they've submitted to us, we would provide things like portageons, street closures, we would provide temporary lighting, we would provide some tent structures for them to do some events downtown. Again, this is the first year, but I sat down with the Parks Director, and we estimated that between 20 and 30,000 in terms of the cost to the city to put that on. The economic benefit is gonna be far larger, these are well-attended events, mountain bike riders tend to be more affluent than the, you know, than the typical tourists. It's, it fits in well with where the city has put a lot of money into, frankly, into our trail network, and it'll really showcase Carson City, not just nationally, but internationally as well. There's, there's quite a bit of interest in these bike, in these bike races. So we're excited about it. The Visitors Bureau has also gotten, when the, when we were designated America's Most Travel Worthy Capital, Google Maps has worked with the Visitors Bureau, and they're actually gonna do video mapping, you know, first-person video of all the, of all the trail networks. So we're excited about it. I think there is a five-mile, a 15-mile, and a 50, a five-zero mile bike race that's part of the Epic Rides. So it'll give something for everyone. You know, the real amateurs can do the five-mile, people who are a little bit more aggressive can do the 15-mile, and then the real pros, obviously, are gonna do the 50-mile race. So we're excited about it. It's gonna start and finish downtown, and it's really gonna showcase the city.
Laurie doesn't wanna go by Richmond and Washington anymore, so...
Any further board discussion? Any public comment on this issue? Okay, then I'm gonna bring it back to the board.
Do a motion if you want. I moved to, I moved to direct staff to prepare the redevelopment authority budget along the lines that they, that was noted to the public and presented here today with the addition or the modification of 30,000 relating to Epic Rides being charged to the redevelopment authority.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I'd like to just discuss, do we want to include the fact that the 30,000 needs to go back to the RAC for discussion, and the undesigned needs to go back, in terms of the roads, go back to the RAC for discussion?
So on discussion, the reason I would say no to that, that's a waste, we've made the decision... We've made the decision, that's not fair to them, to send it to them, to rubber stamp our decision. So I would say that wouldn't be fair to the RAC, but I do want the rest of the undesigned from them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now, concluding public comment, seeing none, we will adjourn as the Redevelopment Authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
Under the Board of Supervisors, we're under non-action items. Any non-action items that City Manager or Board Members want to raise?
I'd just like to just make a general comment that I think we all worked really hard today, and I think it was probably stressful for both the staff, the public listening, and certainly for the board members up here. So under a future agenda item, could we look to maybe develop a methodology to deal with the budget process in a different way next year? I think Mr. Shirk made some very good points. I, I think each of us did, that we need more time and more information to be able to make good decisions on behalf of everyone. And so if we could maybe just come up with a little bit of a plan and, and in the next, like, I don't know, maybe at the September meeting or something, bring an idea of a new method to, especially capital projects, or something. I would like that.
Well, we, we typically do, and we intended to have a special meeting just for the budget, but we had a board member who was unavailable. Between the treasurer interviews and, that's why we are where we are right now. But point taken, and we can do better.
I just want to go on record and thank the members of the Cultural Commission that sat through a lot of what we did this afternoon and then didn't get heard. So I appreciate the fact that they gave up their time to come.
Well, we can call them back. Well, we have to do these things, and, I mean, you know, this is a long day, so did a lot of things. Supervisor Shirk.
Couple of, couple of things. I just want to point out, pulling the, every item off the consent agenda only took 22 minutes, so that didn't slow down the process. Want to make sure of that. And other board members asked questions as well. I think it's a good idea. I still need clarification. I see a lot of material come in and submitted as late material, and every time I've tried it, maybe it's just me, I don't know the process, or no one's explained it to me. I can't get anything submitted as late material, but I see other individuals, even a chairperson can get something submitted as late material. I talked to Sue, the recorder, about minutes of the meeting, how they're posted on our website. If you go there, there's no organization, in my opinion, to it. You go to the calendar, you can pull up something from the, the calendar, it won't have the agenda. Another item will have the agenda. How the agendas are posted are left entirely up to the board commissions or committees. And the minutes of the meetings themselves are posted by the board commissions or committees, if I'm saying that correctly, not by the recorder. Is that correct? No?
No, that's incorrect. My staff and the Recording Secretary's Division post the minutes as soon as they are approved by whichever board commission or committee. In addition to the fact that the audio recording of every meeting is posted within two days of the meeting, because the minutes are not required until 30 days after the meeting, so.
Who posts the agenda? Do you also post the agenda? All agendas?
No.
And who makes the agenda packets for the other boards, commissions, or committees? They themselves make it, or the staff member in charge of that? Because some of those agenda items, they have labels on them, they have pages on them, they're really put together well. Some of those packets are, are really done extremely well.
We're under non-action items, so I got to be careful what you're, how you're doing this.
Sure. Maybe I can shed a little light on it. Each department actually assembles their own agenda items for the, for the various committees, commissions, and boards that they serve as liaisons to. So it's, it's done individually in those departments, and probably every department has a little bit different way of doing that. But really time-consuming effort, takes a lot of, takes a lot of time, effort to put that together.
I agree. And some of those packets are really put well together as compared to our packets, and that's what I was trying to point out. So I think maybe that lean training session could be agenda items. I also would like to know, I know the videos are posted. The trouble is with all these other boards and commissions, to find out the voting, how any agenda item gets voted on, there is no record, and you cannot go anywhere to find how an agenda item was voted on, to my knowledge. Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. But to see boards, commissions, or, or committees, how they voted on each agenda item is not posted anywhere within 24 hours. You have to go to the minutes of the meeting, or you have to go to the video?
Go. Just one quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Supervisor Shirk, we're getting ready to do a Kaizen event on the entire agenda preparation process. I, I would invite you to participate in it. I know this is a, this is a priority for you, and we want, we want the process to work for everyone, and I'd like you to be part of it. I think, I think you have important input, and I think it needs to be heard.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Also, the last item I have is on the city website, which I, I kind of sent you a quick email about this. On the icon, we're listening, when citizens go there, they access it, they post whatever, however they, they do it, it's accessed by a city staff member. And I think we should look at having Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline handle that, rather than have city staff read things that may be directed directly to a board member, to a member of city staff, and rather have city staff read what message is coming to me. I think it should remain anonymous, and it should go through the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline, not through your office, then to forward to me the email. That's my preference. I don't know if it'll go anywhere.
Adriana, I got what he's saying here, but, I mean, once somebody hits that button, says they're listening, it's a public record. I mean, so I don't know how you make it anonymous.
No, you, well, it goes to Fraud, Waste, Fraud.
Somebody could, any member of the public could ask for, could ask for a record. And unless there's some confidential trade secret or personal identifiers, then you would have to give them that information.
Okay. Other comments?
Yep. I'm done.
Well, here, one, I'd like to thank the board for bearing with us, and I hope Supervisor Bonkowski had a good time in Africa.
He did.
He did. On these long agenda items, I think, you know, we do things differently here. And I think Supervisor Shirk raised the one during the, the library interviews about, you know, we take, I take public comment throughout the meeting, because I'm comfortable doing that. But that can extend a meeting out as well. So it's important to have, if we're going to do business, it's important to have the ability to do business efficiently. And in that regard, I think on these longer agenda items or complex agenda items, it behooves our board members to, one, try and get some questions answered before with the relevant staff so that we can move more efficiently during the meeting. So just suggest that, and I, I don't want to be in the Kaizen event either. I don't want to be on the, I don't want to, on the, on the agenda stuff. All right. All right. Public, concluding public comment.
No, I wasn't done. I wasn't done.
No. We're done. We're done. Concluding public comment, come on.
I wasn't done.
You told me you were.
I did not. I said I have one more. I don't know what you listened to. I didn't say that.
All right. Shoot, Jim.
Do you want me to go, or wait for Maurice?
Shoot. Go.
Okay. On, in the Nevada Appeal, May 3rd, an article regarding the Capitol Mall, it cited that Charles Donahue, the State Lands Administrator, has provided a letter of intent authorizing the city government to review the project's entire footprint. I would like, or I respectfully request, if we have received that copy of that letter, could that be provided to all board members?
Okay. Morris, how you doing? Thanks for putting up with us, man.
I'm doing good. This has been great.
Are you Sal or Ben?
Say again?
Are you Sal or Ben?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. All right. Shoot. Go.
Thank you. Good evening. Morris White, for the record. You may have noticed I was late returning from the lunch break. That was because I spent some time at the Legislature this afternoon, and I'm happy to report that the Senate Natural Resources Committee gave a due-pass recommendation to AB 377. So we've passed that hurdle. Also, I would like to let you know that SB 406 is becoming the bill we need to watch in regards to PERS. AB 312 and AB 363, there seems to be an appetite to absorb those two bills into SB 406. I really can't give you a consensus on what might be the future of AB 190, which I reported to you before, is the one we really need to be concerned. There's strong opinions about that on both sides, kill it or move it.
So it's AB 406?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
SB 406.
SB 406.
SB 406. Thank you.
Thanks, Morris. Any other public comment? Ready to adjourn? Motion's in order. We're adjourned.